Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 2, 2025 pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30, 2027. This meeting, the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 881-692-656, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, but despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. And the procedural steps today will be, we'll start with a roll call vote of all board members. One of our regular members is online because he is ill, David Veach, so I just wanted to point that out. We usually don't have that, but in 40Bs, we are waiving our usual rule and allowing members to participate online if they're able. We ask that any citizen or non-board members on the call, that are on the call, just make sure we are able to identify you. The hearing notice will be read by staff. Sarah Clark, am I right? You are your representative, and in this case, Penrose, will have an opportunity to speak. And then I will read all letters that we've received since the last meeting. Anyone wishing to comment may speak today for up to four minutes. We're also going to loosen that rule since we're winding down. Just make sure everybody feels that they've had an opportunity to say what they want to say. And then the applicant, oh yeah, then anyone wishing to comment, I already said that, the applicant can rebut anything that they've heard in the letters or that anyone has said. The board members will have an opportunity to state their concerns or ask questions, and then we will vote to continue to adate certain. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time for adjournment. So let's start with a roll call vote of all board members. Dave Veach will just ask you, since you're online, to go first.
That's a good, excuse me, that would be a good start. I hope you can understand me. But I, David H. Veach, I approve this for our meeting format.
Thank you.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBoer, I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Parash, I approve as well. So at this point, Sarah?
Application number 25-034, Penrose LLC, 15 Milk Street, 16th floor, Boston, Mass. 02109. The property is owned by the Town of Chatham located at 0 and 1533 Main Street, also showed on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 9D Block 4A Lot 1 and map 9D Block 4 Lot 18. The applicants are requesting the grant of a comprehensive permit under past general law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56 for the construction of 48 dwelling units in nine structures, also proposed as a construction of a management building. The applicants are requesting the grant of various waivers from the regulations promulgated by the Chatham zoning bylaw and other local regulations. The properties contain 128,492 square feet, 2.95 acres in the R20 zoning district. This was continued from May 8, June 5, July 17, August 21, and September 18, 2025.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record. My name is Andrew Singer, Attorney at Dennis Port. With me up here is Carmen Chung from Penrose. We also have our entire project team with us, although today, and you may appreciate this, after six months of reviewing with you in depth all of the matters that we've discussed, our presentations today are actually going to be pretty brief because, as the chair noted, we believe we are, you know, shortly at the end of this portion of the 40B review process. As an update from the September 18 meeting, we did submit revised plans which merely show the outdoor grills and the one sign, as was discussed at the last meeting. We also submitted a revised waiver list which merely changes the sign request from two signs to reflect just one sign, so very minor changes. We also, earlier this week, submitted a letter to you with two pro formas, one for 48 units, which is what's proposed, and Penrose went and did a pro forma for a 42 unit. I did want to say, we did not intend to submit that so close to the meeting, but I was away and just got back at the beginning of this week, so we put it together as soon as we could and submitted that to you. So you have that before you, and what I wanted just to start off on that right from the beginning is, as we'll discuss, is for financial and practical reasons, as I wrote in the letter and I'll discuss today on the record, and after due consideration of the request that you made, the applicant is respectfully not able to decrease the number of units in the proposal, and this is the original number that was proposed to the town, was reviewed by the select board, was ultimately accepted as part of the RFP process, and for the reasons I'm going to reiterate and that Carmen is going to discuss briefly as well, we believe that those are the numbers that are required for this project to be economically and practically and operationally viable for the applicant. With that being said, what I'd like to also, after so many months, again discuss on the record is, as you get ready to deliberate and issue and vote on a decision, is the legal standard you look at, because again, this is very different from a 40A zoning special permit case. The legal standard you're looking at, is the project consistent with local needs? That's it. It's that straightforward in words. It's not that straightforward in practicality, because to do that, is it consistent with local needs standard, you have to balance every single board in town, right? You're looking at zoning, planning, historic, health, conservation, safety, everything. That's your job, and you've been doing a very in-depth job looking at that over the past six months. So is the project consistent with the local needs? I would say it is for at least two reasons. The first reason is a presumption in Commonwealth of Massachusetts law that if a town is less than 10% of its year-round housing stock as deeded affordable housing, then there is a presumption that a proposal is consistent with local needs, right? That's a legal presumption. But then I'd ask you to consider every single person who has stood before these microphones during this hearing. I don't think I didn't hear one of them, that was poor grammar, but I didn't hear one of them not say, whether a supporter or an opponent of this project, did not say, "We have an urgent, urgent housing crisis in Chatham." Every single person. Now, there are obviously debates over the mechanics and what we're here, but from a consistent with local needs, I think it is very demonstratively proven that there is an urgent housing crisis in Chatham. I think that is why the town, which owns this land, put out a request for proposals to develop this land for rental affordable housing, and that's the project you have before you today. Under 760 CMR 56.056A4, that's a long string of numbers, but that's the mass regulations that govern your review of 40Bs, and it also discusses what you look at. It has a really good language in what you're looking at. It also gets to what's consistent with local needs. It talks about looking at density, and it says, "The board is only entitled to ask about density if the request is justified by a valid health, safety, environmental design, open space planning, or other local concern that directly results from the size of a project on a particular site." Now, in this case, there have been a few comments that have been made about some concerns when you were talking about density, but they revolved around, as I heard the testimony, a potential further increase in conforming rear and side setbacks, the word "water," and then the phrase "general wear and tear." So I respectfully submit, and the applicant does, that none of these rise to the level of a valid health, safety, environmental, et cetera, reason for looking at density. But there's a reason for why I said that. During the long review of this process with you, no remaining issues that are specific to those categories, all of those technical categories, have been raised or alleged. None of the town departments that have reviewed the proposal have raised any of these issues with wastewater, storm water, utilities, traffic, lighting, or site design that directly results from the size of the project. All questions that have been raised, and there have been many questions, and we've had lots of discussion with you, with questions that were raised by town departments, by yourselves, by peer review, every one of them has been satisfactorily addressed, and even addition, the town peer review, the company that you hired to look at this project, which has reviewed everything several times, they also have stated that they have no ongoing questions or concerns. So we respectfully submit that in this instance, there are none of those concerns. You've looked at them, you've analyzed them, the town has analyzed them, peer review has analyzed them, and the applicant has made many concessions, tweaks, changes, the plans have evolved, and you discussed this at your last meeting, the whole, this concept of negotiations and deliberations, I think Town Council commented at the last meeting, that's been going on for the last six months, and that's what gets us to the plans that you have before you today. Now, I would like to address one thing that is very concerning to us. An email came into you yesterday that made a, so this is a prebut as opposed to a rebut. That email made a maliciously false statement and stated outright that a tragic fire at an assisted living facility off Cape earlier this summer was a Penrose facility, and that they were derelict in how they responded at that site. There was a tragic fire in Fall River earlier this summer. It was not a Penrose property. In fact, it was an assisted living facility that was located in a, potentially a six-decade-old motel building, which was absolutely nothing to do with the project that's before you for this site. The applicant's proposal before you has state-of-the-art buildings that comply with the 10th Building Code of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They're fully sprinkled, they have full access as required by the Chatham Fire Department. The Chatham Fire Department has looked at this site, as I said, multiple times, turning templates, you've looked at it as well, turning templates, access to each of the buildings, two driveways so they can go both ways around if the fire department has to. This site has been designed and potentially could be one of the safest sites in Chatham when all is said and done, because it is all modern. To allege that a tragedy somewhere else, first, to outright say it belonged to the applicant, which is wrong and false, but then it goes on with a whole bunch of language to say that your review of this project and the fire department's review of this project and the town's review of this project have been inadequate, we respectfully suggest has been done just to poison the well. It does not add anything meaningful or is at all relevant to your deliberations. The applicant responded to the town's RFP in the initial stages, and again, it was a town request to develop affordable housing on this land. They complied with the minimum density requirements that were put into the RFP, and they purposely did not maximize the number of units that could be there. You've heard that from both the applicant, or from several representatives of the applicant over the meetings. Their general development size is 60 plus or minus. Well, they came in here with 48 because they felt that a larger size was not suitable for this property. And again, the project's been revised several times to take into consideration requests of both the board members and the neighbors. You have had, while there's always opposition to 40B requests, I've never done one that hasn't had it, this project has had demonstrative and substantial and significant support in the community that you have heard time and time again. In addition to the 42-unit pro forma that was submitted, and that demonstrates a nearly $1.4 million loss, inability to economically move forward with the project, that gap, reducing density in this case further, and you heard this, have heard this before and we're repeating it, because again, this is kind of summing up everything as this process is reaching its conclusion, it negatively, with any change in density here, will negatively impact the applicant's ability to best operate and manage the facility and the community. Now, these 48 units, which again are less than the applicant's usual 60, they're needed because in their extensive experience, they need it to professionally manage the site to remain competitive in funding, because if you don't get funding, you could approve anything all day long and the project will never get built. Money has to be obtained for it. And, as you heard last month, this project, along with others, allows them to co-utilize their regional resources to build a community that's smaller than its current standard practice, but one that is going to work for the community. And when I say "community," I mean the town of Chatham, as well as the community of residents who are going to be living here. Penrose representatives have, on several occasions, reiterated to you and emphasized to you the fact that they are looking at building a development, a community, that is a proud home to the people who are going to be living there, and we respectfully submit that the plans before you are exactly that. Timing, as the chair has noted in other times, is running out on the legal review time that you have. What we, and you have a meeting today, and I believe there's another scheduled meeting for October 30, and then shortly after that, you have to, you would have to wrap up deliberations within 40 days, I think, after that. What we are going to respectfully request, and Carmen's going to speak after I, but what the applicant would respectfully request today, we're happy to answer any more questions. You'll listen to maybe a final round of testimony from the public. We would ask you to consider closing the hearing to public testimony today and beginning your deliberations, and I ask that not cavalierly, but October 30 is 28 days from today. That's four weeks. If you are not able or choose not to start deliberations today, it's just going to rush you that much more at the end of the process, and if we're able to today begin deliberations, which don't lock you into anything, it's just beginning the time to discuss a decision, to discuss conditions, we would ask you to consider that before you ultimately continue today's meeting. With that, we appreciate all of the time that you've put in since May. We appreciate your time today and going forward, and I'd like to turn it over to Carmen. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Andrew.
Welcome, Carmen.
Carmen Chung with Penrose, and I think I wanted to just add a little bit more context as to why the unit count is so important. I think whenever we go into communities and start working with the public about kind of what things we can or can't do, I think it really helps when we can kind of explain the rationales, not just, "No, we can't do it," but why. I think we've talked about it before, it's not just about the development budget that you have in front of you and the gap it creates on the financing on the front end, but for us, so much of our philosophy of how we develop and operate is about, what does this look like in 15 years? And every single unit that we lose, it's like one more, it impacts the, it's one more straw, and at what point does this kind of, is the breaking point? And for us, usually, we think it's 60 units, and this is already so far below our minimum that even one more unit, from our perspective, it would, we feel like, from our history of managing and operating projects like this, that it just creates so much more opportunity for the project to suffer any sort of unexpected condition and to be challenged financially from an operating standpoint to be able to support its expenses, whether it be snowplowing, whether it be the pest control, whether it be the landscaping. And it's not that we've never done a 42-unit project before. We have in our past, and it's because of that past history that tells us that operating a project feasibly in the long run is really challenging because expenses will start to, it's kind of the math game here where expenses will start to increase more than our revenue increases because expenses will inevitably increase at a higher rate than the income will allow us to bear. And it's that history that has really made us be disciplined about the types of projects we do, and yes, having more projects in the region is helpful, and that's an additional level of redundancy, but each project needs to be able to stand on its own because all of our state agency lenders, our financing partners, our investors will be looking at this as standalone projects. And I also wanted to comment a little bit on the development budget and how, it feels like numbers can be like very black and white, but obviously, numbers imbued in the numbers you see in front of you is also our, reflecting our philosophy of how we operate and how we build, because the operating numbers is numbers that we got from a property management company. This is our model of how we build, and I think part of the reason why the town selected us during the competitive RFP process was because of the things that we, as a philosophy, want to do, like the full-time property management, full-time maintenance, and in how we build, things like all of our stove tops have our smart burners that turn off after a certain temperature, because we know fires are one of the biggest reasons or risks for buildings like this, are wood frame buildings, or it's like how we do our piping and how we want home runs for all of our plumbing. These are our design standards that are also part of our pricing from our contractor, and the numbers you have in front of you are reflective of how we build and how we operate, and someone else could probably maybe build a cheaper building, but I don't think that's necessarily what the town of Chatham wants, and that's partially, that's part, a big reason, I believe, why the town selected us during the competitive RFP process. So someone else can come in and give you a completely set of, different set of numbers, and it could be true for them, but these are the numbers that are true for us based on how we like to build our buildings and how we operate. So with that, I think I'll reiterate Andrew's comment that would request to close the public hearing. Part of the reason for that also is I want to share with the board is the financing that we are applying for from the project, there's only one application round a year, and the pre-applications for that is typically sometime before the end of the year, and if we miss that pre-application deadline, in which zoning is a really critical part of that, then we'd have to wait another year.
With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we really appreciate your time.
Yep, all right. Thank you. So I think we'll just do our usual meeting procedures at this point, and I will just urge people to remember that if you have any conversations that are going to be at all lengthy, please take them outside and shut off any gadgets that make any noise, if you please. If you do want to talk when we get to that, just please line up over there and wait till you get to the mic before you speak. Okay, so I'm going to read the correspondences, and first one is from Catherine Shearer, 14 Jeanette Drive, and she writes, "On October 2," that was received today, apparently, that she urges each of us on the zoning board to approve Penrose's application to create 48 affordable rental units on Main Street. As you are aware, Chatham desperately needs housing that is affordable in order to attract young families, house teachers, firefighters, fishermen, and other local workers and retirees. In response to the, an RFP that was requested, development for at least 36 affordable units, they elected Penrose. Throughout the permit process, Penrose has listened to the concerns of Chatham residents, which it appears particularly attention to those who immediately abut the property and will be most directly affected. In response to concerns expressed, Penrose has made a number of changes to their original design, which they summarize in their September 18 presentation. These changes reduce the impact of the proposals in various ways while retaining all 48 units. I believe the design as modified should be approved. Penrose has successfully addressed most, if not all, of the concerns raised by immediate abuders, as well as concern raised by others in town. CBA approval of the permit application will allow us to move forward with the creation of a thoughtfully designed affordable housing that we urgently need. Thank you for your consideration." Next, we have a note from Thomas Clark from October 1, 2025. Honorable members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'm writing to express my support for the proposal to build low and moderate income housing in the town of Chatham, and Chatham faces a pressing need for affordable housing due to combination of economic, demographic, and workforce challenges. I note herein the most important reasons for driving this need: workforce retention and recruitment. Many essential workers, teachers, first responders, healthcare staff, and service employees cannot afford to live in Chatham due to high housing costs. Affordable housing helps retain local talent and ensures that critical services remain staffed. Aging population and fixed income. Chatham has a significant senior population Chatham has a significant senior population, many of whom live on a fixed income and struggle with rising housing costs. Affordable units allow older residents to age in place without being displaced by market pressures. Housing for low and moderate income residents. A large portion of Chatham's population earns below 80% of the median income, making market rate housing inaccessible. Recent projects aim to serve residents earning 30 to 60 of AMI with long-term affordability guarantees built into development agreements. Seasonal and tourism economy. Chatham's economy relies heavily on seasonal tourism, which creates a demand for temporary and year-round workers. Without affordable housing, these workers often commute long distances or leave the area entirely, straining local businesses. Preserving community diversity. Rising poverty values and limited housing stock have led to demographic shifts, pricing out younger families and longtime residents. Affordable housing helps maintain a diverse and vibrant community by offering options across income levels. Legal planning obligations. Chatham is actively working to meet its obligation under the Massachusetts subsidized housing inventory and fair housing laws. Projects like Main Street and Meeting House Road developments are part of a strategic plan to increase affordable and attainable housing options. I urge you to approve the proposal. And Thomas Clark lives at 20 Uncle's Lotus Road in West Chatham. Okay. Next, we have a note from Stuart Smith from October 1, 2025. Thank you for considering my earlier correspondence to you regarding this project in August of this year. In addition to your thoughtful responsibility to the citizens of Chatham with respect to our zoning laws, as public servants, we shall, we all share a responsibility to our citizens and future citizens with regard to public safety, health, and welfare for our community. The proponents of the project, of the proposed housing project on the former Buckley property in West Chatham have not adequately addressed these issues. With the recent tragedy and high death rate in the fire in Far River, and it says at one of their housing complexes, this short fall resulted in tragedy. As a result, a demonstrated third-party evaluation should be required to be undertaken by the proponents. We must be assured that adequate fire response can be done effectively under the worst circumstances. It must be demonstrated by this third-party review that not only Chatham ladder trucks have full and unhindered access to the buildings when the parking lot is full or parked vehicles, but also the likelihood of a second ladder truck being required during any second or third alarms. It must be demonstrated that other fire apparatus, such as Chatham's pumper tank fleet, can access this property simultaneously to our ladder apparatus. Ambulances routinely and as a matter of response directives respond to these building fires as well. Numerous fire command and police vehicles will also be responding. Clearly, the proposal does not address the real-life full response to a building fire at this location. An outside third party will ensure the maximum objectiveness that is required for this evaluation. Let's not, let's not be the next Far River or Worcester or the many other communities that have faced unnecessarily high casualty rates in their building fires. Given the close proximity of the neighbors, those buildings will also need to be considered and protected as well as the inhabitants of homes on any, to any prospective fire. Given the number of units proposed by this location, a response to building fire would be most challenging to save life and property. The proposed number of units all but assures an unnecessary risk to the inhabitants of the building and in the neighborhood in general. Maximizing the property with 48 units taxes an already overtaxed, fragile environmental area. Given our location to the sea and single-source aquifer, it is vital that we be sound stewards of our already overdeveloped community. This overdevelopment is directly adjacent to the Main Street thoroughfare Route 28 in Chatham, where no sidewalk has been assured to access the north side of 28, where the sidewalks are located. The project encourages the use of mass transit, if not relies upon that utilization, but does not provide adequate and safe embarking and disembarking of passengers from area transit buses. It is imperative that the bus have a designated pull-off area to get off of 28 and away from this busy intersection and the adjacent rotary. Short of this, adequate bus stopping area needs to be provided within the proposed housing complex parking area. The proponents are capable of providing solutions for these critical public safety problems that exist at this location. The zoning board of appeals is the local mechanism for ensuring that proponents are required to do so. Thank you for your service to the community in a very difficult job. I'm confident you are prepared to meet the challenge. Again, this is Stuart F X Smith of South Chatham. Okay. Next, we have a note from Rick Gennella Levitt, 31 Barn Hill Road. We request the zoning board of appeals follow, place the following conditions on Penrose Main Street building permit. Number one, and there's just two numbers. Eliminate the three parking spaces at the southwest corner of the site bordering the Levitt property and relocate the trash dumpster elsewhere on the site. This request is premised on the town's RFP specifying that all traffic flow be internal and that site design respect all adjacent properties. At your September 18 hearing, Pendra responded to this request claiming that noise associated with dumpster pickup will happen only twice weekly and for very short periods. Our concern is not only with pickups, but more importantly, with night and day use of the dumpster by residents. The proposed dumpster location at the southwest corner of the site is a long way from residents living closer to Main Street. They will not walk carrying their trash barrels and bags, but drive to the proposed dumpster location. We will be exposed to constant traffic and dumpster noise, night and day, from a large number of residents. A more appropriate dumpster location is behind the office community center building closer to Main Street or some other location near Main Street. The RFP's internal traffic flow requirement is intended to respect all adjacent property owners' privacy and quiet enjoyment of their property, especially single-family homeowners like us, from the noise, light, and movement of traffic. Eliminating three parking spaces will still allow substantially more spaces than Penrose initially, and as needed for this affordable housing development, we expect the town and Penrose to live up to this RFP requirement. Number two. The town's RFP also specifies that site design retain and enhance natural buffers to surrounding properties. We have worked with the Penrose design team and very much appreciate their cooperation on this vital matter. We request the Penrose be required to provide a planting plan and schedule specifying the types of evergreen trees, height, and spacing of trees at planting along the entire 200-foot extent of our property line to be included as a permit condition. Included also in that condition should be a requirement that existing trees be identified and marked for preservation. Natural buffers are essential to the privacy and quiet enjoyment of our home when multifamily apartment buildings are built adjacent to single-family homes. We ask that you give special consideration to the town's RFP specifying retaining, enhancing a natural buffer when crafting these conditions. Respectfully, Rick Gennella Levitt, 31 Barn Hill Road, West Chatham, received September 29, 2025. Next, we have a note from Wendy and David Perry, 24 Jesse's Landing. We are writing to express serious concerns regarding the town of Chatham's current approach to affordable housing, specifically the proposed Chapter 40B development on 1533 Main. We have been coming to Chatham since we were children, and we were excited when we were able to buy a house to support the town we love. While fully support, we fully support affordable housing, the current proposal to the 40B development appears to first consider Penrose and its requirements for profits instead of true needs of Chatham and its residents. Our concerns include density. 48 units on three acres is too large and not in zoning alignment with the rest of the town. It will create more traffic, potential accidents, on an already busy straight highway. And this seems to set a precedent to break zoning laws in other parts of Chatham as well. Once 40B housing is built, it can never be changed. The proposed development on Main Street is excessively large, far the designated space. Such a large-scale project risks negativity, negatively impacting the existing character infrastructure and surrounding neighborhoods of the area. Number two, motivation. Chatham appears to be meeting the need of Penrose development and its profitability model. Ownership should be the priority of Chatham. Penrose demands that 40B projects, Meeting House and Main, be built to keep them profitable and only have a rental model. Would it not be better to build long-term residency and community of Chatham by offering residents a chance to rent, to own their own places so that they have long-term security, can attend schools for years to come, and can truly integrate into the Chatham community? Each 40B project should be looked at independently and not to meet the developer's demands. Homeownership of Chatham residents should be prioritized above the needs of national developer. In summary, we ask the town truly consider the long-term need of Chatham residents who need housing and the original intent of the RFP, which was affordable home ownership, and Chatham balances that with preservation of the town's character, its population, and uniqueness on cave card. The 40B decisions are permanent and cannot be amended, so this is a decision that will affect Chatham forever. Respectfully, Wendy and David Perry. Next, we have a short note from C Kenner, Carol Kenner, 68 Sea Change Lane, South Chatham. First, thank you for your public service. As a year-round resident of South Chatham, I write to urge you to support Penrose Main Street permit. Let's send Penrose out now to get the project constructed and completed for the benefit of our community. This note is from Gil Spocks, and it was received on September 24. I write briefly to support the West Chatham Affordable Attainable Housing Project. While I'm not a full-time resident, I have a deep affection for Chatham. I met my wife on, at the Rotary 60 years ago. We have a second home here for 36 years. My brother-in-law is a year-round resident. One of our sons worked for over a decade in the Chatham hospitality business, and I currently serve as co-director of Chatham Railroad Museum. I reviewed the long history of the town approvals related to West Chatham project. From publicly available information, it certainly appears Penrose's proposal is a unique opportunity to address the town not affordable housing crisis, which has been favorably viewed by any number of elected and appointed town officials. I am not a zoning expert, and my sole contribution to this issue is to remind the board that the beneficiaries of this project would be the very people who we rely upon to make Chatham a safe and special place. The families of current and future firemen, policemen, EMTs, teachers, hospitality workers, salespeople, mechanics, construction workers, et cetera. I could go on and on, but for the short of that, but the short of it is that many people of these, of these are friends of mine and many, and many of us, and deserve a chance to live where they work. While I respect the right of proximate neighbors to express their views for the project, many of the prospective beneficiaries are already effectively our neighbors who, whose well-being is also entitled to respect. In short, given the lengthy prior history of good faith town approvals of the Penrose project, I am deeply concerned that if it's rejected, that this, at this very late juncture, it'll be nearly impossible in the future to attract viable affordable housing projects to the town. Respectfully, Gil Spocks. This is from Jackie Marcel, 32 Jesse's Landing, September 24, 2025. I would like to formally acknowledge and thank the board for the extensive study and dedicated evaluation of the Buckley's property project. Your commitment and effort have played a crucial role in advancing the interests of the community. Chatham faces a pressing need for affordable housing. To address this challenge, two major projects have been initiated, the Buckley property and Meeting House. Projects are an important step towards 10% of the housing stock as required by the state. Throughout the development process, presentations, and comments, and the public have led to several changes to the Buckley project. Notably, the board meeting held on September 18, several questions were raised regarding the project's density. The developer responded with concerns and explaining that reducing the number of units from 48 to 42 would not be financially feasible. Their experience indicates that a total of 60 units is required to support a full-time manager and additional support services. However, because the developer owns other properties nearby in Eastham and Orleans, they believe it would be possible to make the project work with fewer units. Between the Buckley property and Meeting House Road project in Chatham, there are currently 90 units planned. If the Buckley property is reduced to 42 and the Meeting House project stays at the 42, that would be 84. This figure is still well above the 60-unit threshold to support a full-time manager. Additionally, the proximity of these properties, which are approximately one mile apart, enhances the feasibility necessary to support services. Given that both projects are located in Chatham and together total 90 units, it raises the question as to why the developer is considering the properties outside of Chatham, specifically those in Eastham and Orleans, as a means of supporting the Buckley project. I appreciate the board's thoughts regarding the pro forma for the project and would be interested in the board asking the developer about the two proposed projects in Chatham supporting the necessary services. One other thought the board and developer should consider is the monies potentially coming from federal government to support the project. As we have witnessed in the last eight months, every item in the budget is being scrutinized and cuts are forthcoming. I do not know what the situation with, with respect to hard monies, but it should be researched before a decision is made. Jackie Marcel, 32 Jesse's Landing in Chatham. Next, we have a lengthy letter from Elaine Gibbs, and I'm going to essentially read it, but I'm going to take the opportunity that our rules provide to summarize some of it. Okay. Elaine Gibbs tells us on September 23, 2025, I ask that my comments be shared with the ZBA well before the October 2 meeting and included in the correspondence. I apologize for the length, but it's as if Penrose has never done one of these projects before. I'm not in a butter and therefore not personally impacted, but I felt strongly from the beginning this process that whatever we build on 5033 Main and Meeting House should be provided in an environment that's not demeaning to those who reside there. The attitude by some that tenants should feel fortunate to have a roof over their heads is condescending, and in my opinion, a very low acceptable bar. Density. Penrose has repeatedly asserted that the excessive high density of 48 units is driven solely by their profit margin, not the quality of life of the tenants. And they continue to compare this project to Nauset Green as an analog. They are not comparable in any way. And then she goes on to give differences between Nauset Green in Eastham and this project that you could read online if you want to get to the details. But she does point out that 1533 Main is located in an already heavily traveled congested state road in our main access corridor of all of Chatham, and that Nauset Green is on the side of the road with six units per acre versus 16 units per acre at 1533. Landscaping. I ask you visualize the project on Main Street at street level, not from renderings provided. Virtually all three acres will have to be clear-cut. The misleading renderings show mature landscaping with 40-foot trees well above the 30-foot roof lines, which none of us will ever see in our lifetimes. The proposed landscaping of both locations, if available, per Penrose are deciduous trees and shrubs that will bear five months of a year. Assurances from Penrose that they will retain as many trees as possible isn't sufficient or binding. They've made a lot of promises with caveats not in the RFP. The nine 1533 Main residential buildings are huge. The larger buildings are two-thirds the size of a brick portion, of the brick portion of the community center and will all be seen from the road year-round for years to come, despite what was said by the landscape designer about the rendering size of trees being accurate within a few years. We didn't just fall off the turnip truck. That is simply false. Nauset Green was completed in 2020. Their landscaping is still sparse. Occupancy. Based on bedrooms, the occupancy capacity is potentially 172 to 200 tenants, two-bedroom or more per Penrose. The 95 to 100 projected based on Nauset Green is totally unrealistic for Chatham, which is a far more desirable location. Family isn't defined by state agencies and could therefore be up to six or more unrelated individuals in a three-bedroom unit. In addition, temporary visitors are permitted to stay for 14 days, taking up unassigned parking. Three is income of all six individuals required and used for qualification. I think she meant how. How will subletting by individuals on the lease be prevented? Will, how will subletting by individuals on the lease be prevented? As the only far-profit corporation to submit an RFP, Charlie Adams made it clear at the meeting that profit drove the density, and this is why they never should have been chosen. Penrose also made it clear they never would have taken on the extreme topography challenges of Meeting House, except to make the financials work at 1533 Main. The town was warned by many people many times this is where we were headed. Utilities and storage. This is the first time we've heard that there are no basements. At a minimum, there should be common basements with access from the interior for storage and insulation. She goes on to talk about plumbing and where you're going to put your personal effects. Again, this can all be read on the town's website. If there's no, okay, if there's no washer dryer in all the units, as the sample lease indicates, and not checked off in the financial cost for appliances, a laundry mat should be located in the community building rather than requiring tenants to drive to the one downtown. Outdoor utilities at Nauset Green are an eyesore, directly abutting the units and shouldn't be accessible to children. Every member should drive through that project. Parking. West Chatham is no grocery stores, no pedestrians, no pharmacy, no schools, no banking, requiring cars for the basic necessities of life and for work. 1.52 cars per unit, again, based on Nauset Green, is woefully insufficient. And she goes on to talk about the issue of transportation. If cars are illegally parked with no sticker, Penrose has not mentioned how that would be enforced. Parking should be assigned near each unit, two spaces per unit. Then the next topic is local preference and then ownership restriction management. So as to local preference, despite claims that 70% of the units will likely be local preference, that isn't determined by state until after the project is completed. And as to home, as to ownership, units are deed restricted with the current AMIs into perpetuity. That's 30 to 100 years, depending on who you ask. Penrose will own the land and buildings. I've asked before with no answer what happens if Penrose, as the only far-profit company, goes bankrupt at some point down the road or closes their Massachusetts office with no answer. In conclusion, based on Town Council's opinion, I'm very pleased the ZBA is requiring Penrose to defend their contention of financial infeasibility by reducing density, also requiring peer review audit of their financials, as other towns have done, recommended by state lending companies before choosing a developer. Kat, and she, there are some more notes here, but I will say that she says Chatham can do better and should. Last, we have a note from Cynthia Fucci. That's received on September 22. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Ms. Goldsmith, please accept this letter for inclusion in the official record. While I understand the board has asked Penrose if they could reduce the number to 42 apartments, I remain deeply concerned that this density is still too far high, too high for the location and inconsistent with the character and capacity, and capacity of our town. Building 42 apartments in this area will create significant challenges in terms of traffic, parking, public safety, and overall impact on the town. Many residents, including myself, support affordable housing, but it must be developed responsibly with thoughtful regard to scale and infrastructure. In addition, I was concerned to hear Penrose explain that the community center will be located at the Buckley Property, and the future residents of Meeting House will be expected to travel to Main Street to access that building. This arrangement underscores how poorly scaled, scaled both projects are. The Buckley site is too dense to function independently, and Meeting House will lack its own essential amenities. Penrose also mentioned that a social worker would be present on site. While resident support services can be positive, in the right context, I find it troubling that such a role is being proposed here. It raises questions about whether development is being designed with challenges that require additional oversight. Who will pay for this position, and will accountability be managed? These details should be transparent before the board considers approval. Another issue that has not been addressed is parking for outside services. Many residents will at times require home health aides, visiting nurses, and other support professionals. With such high density and already limited parking, it's unrealistic to think outside services can be accommodated. I'm also concerned about the role of the town's legal counsel. From my perspective, there appears to be more advocacy on behalf of the project than for the community's interests. This erodes trust in the process and makes it even more important that residents' voices be given full weight. I respectfully urge the town and the board to consider a more balanced approach that provides affordable housing without overwhelming the site or the town, reducing unit count further, along with appropriate safeguards for parking, green space, neighborhood fit, and be more, would be a more reasonable path forward. Thank you for reading it, and please confirm that this letter will be included in the record for October 2, which it was. Okay. Who wants to talk now? I've heard my voice enough. Yeah. So, questions from the audience, comments, concerns? Yes, ma'am. When you get to the microphone, as usual, just state your name for the record, even though we know who you are.
Shereen Davis. So I'm here today not as a select board member or, or from the Housing Trust, but as someone deeply invested in a local business, which has provided good work to young people, many of whom are not housing secure. The industry in which my business belongs has brought to this town countless hard-working men and women who've built their lives here, starting out on the back of a fishing boat, in a packing house, or in a restaurant, serving seafood that defines our community. And if you look around the room, there's a number of those people that are probably here, and they have built successfully, successful lives here. The fishing industry is woven into the fabric of Chatham's identity and economy. Yes, it has become increasingly difficult, yet it has become increasingly difficult to recruit and keep crews we need: deckhands, shellfish harvesters, processing staff, and seafood, seafood sale workers who keep this historic livelihood alive. One critical reason is housing. Unique to Chatham is to work the waters as a commercial shell fisherman. You must live in Chatham to do so. This is both a requirement and an opportunity, but it's an opportunity slipping away for far too many. Without stable, affordable rentals, we lose the very people who power our multimillion-dollar industry, an industry that not only sustains our economy, but preserves our Chatham heritage, and it feeds our people. This project represents a rare and meaningful chance to address this urgent need. It would provide young workers, including those starting their lives in fishing, seafood processing, and local food service, a foothold here. It would give our businesses a fighting chance to recruit and retain the next generation, ensuring that the tradition of harvesting and sharing Chatham seafood doesn't fade because of a lack of housing. I urge you to support this housing proposal. It is not just about buildings, it's about sustaining the working waterfront, the economy that it depends on, and the opportunity for people to call Chatham their home.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Jeff Dykens, 1745 Main Street, West Chatham. While I'm vice chair of the Chatham Select Board, I am not representing the views of the Select Board with the following remarks. Having attended or viewed all the ZBA-Penrose hearings, I admit I was taken aback at the end of the last zoning board meeting, where three members present and one represented as supportive but in absentia requested that Penrose run a pro forma to include 42 units versus the 48 being proposed. I couldn't help sit there and think that a potential roadblock to the project's approval was being taken up possibly by the, by the ZBA very late in the game, and thought to myself, to what end? Penrose has consistently maintained that they strongly prefer to develop a 60-unit project from an economic and management perspective, but felt that the 60 units would not be a good fit for the Buckley Gardens footprint. Thus, Penrose presented a 48-unit project that it believed would satisfy the stated housing goals of the town, meet their internal standards for a quality product, and be economically viable, given the synergy of its possible development of the Meeting House Road project and projects on the drawing board in neighboring towns. I believe the Penrose hearing so far, given the good work performed by the ZBA, town staff, Penrose, and their consultants, have made much progress. Likely waiver requests and other concerns, including building heights, building materials, setbacks, abutter concerns, landscaping, parking, and density, have been discussed and seemingly negotiated with what I have perceived to be consensus among the majority of the members of the ZBA, with a high probability of eventual approval on the requisite waivers being requested. But given the last hearing, I am not so certain. I beg to remind the ZBA that the town asked for development proposals in response to an RFP under the auspices of a friendly 40B. Penrose was chosen in a very open process in a land disposition agreement negotiated and signed by the leadership of our town. Should the ZBA decide, in its collective wisdom, the project's requested waivers not to be approved, or its request for changes to the project render it uneconomic for the developers, there are at least two possible outcomes in my pea brain and an overarching third most important outcome that I believe. First, the developer withdraws his proposal for Buckley Gardens and therefore also for Meeting House Road. I believe an extremely very unfortunate outcome. Good luck to Chatham, then, to attract competent and worldly developers for any further efforts into providing affordable and attainable housing here in town. It may be quite difficult to regain the credibility high ground on this one. Second, the developer departs and files a lawsuit against the town, where we have been told, told repeatedly by Town Council, based on actual 40B case law, that the town would be at a deep disadvantage to prevail. Third, and most important in my mind, we will have lost the absolute best opportunity we have had of late to provide our town with a bolus of desperately needed rental affordable and attainable housing, considering our truly abysmal historical record of providing such housing for our workers, our professionals, and our families, along with the children so desperately needed in our schools. So I urge you to please work through any outstanding, meaningful issues, to close this hearing, to continue your deliberations, and devote your approval of the Penrose-Buckley Gardens project with all due alacrity. And I thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Ella Levitt, a Barnhill Road abutter. I am disappointed and distressed by Penrose's decision not to honor my request to locate a dumpster and eliminate a small parking lot that currently are planned next to my home. I'm disappointed because it means a lot to me in terms of privacy and quiet enjoyment of my home and gardens. I am very distressed because it is the right and neighborly thing to do. We share a long property line that will now have two large multifamily apartment buildings looming over me, one exceeding 30 feet, a road, a parking lot, and a dumpster within a few feet of my home, and backyard where a small, single-family summer cottage now exists. Relocating the dumpster will have no impact on this project. In fact, it will be more convenient for tenants if the dumpsters move closer to Main Street. Eliminating the short road spur and three-car parking lot will honor Penrose's stated commitment to comply with the town's RFP specifications, that all traffic flow be internal, respecting adjacent residential neighborhoods. I need your help by making my request a condition of the Main Street building permit, along with my added request for a substantial vegetated buffer, the entire length of our shared property. Please help me. I thank you, and I'd like to give you page from the RFP response. Madam Chair?
Sure. If you just hand it to our clerk on the right. She'll pass it down. Welcome.
Hi, Frank Messina. Two things. One, Chairman of the Historical Commission.
Can I ask you to remove your hat?
Sorry, Frank Messina.
Would you mind removing your hat?
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Didn't know I had it on.
Thank you.
Actually, put the hat on, because my wife says when the TV camera comes, it shines above my head. Frank Messina, 58 Island View Lane, South Chatham, Massachusetts. From a Historical Commission point of view, which I chair, we're disappointed that after all this time since they came to the Historical Commission back in January, I guess it was, and I think it was a very loud, clear message from the Historical Commission, relative to the density and what you could do about it, and also, if you can't do anything about it, at least do something about the design so we don't get this institutional-looking project. So other than putting a little, you know, lipstick on a pig, as they say, you know, changing a few things, it's, it looks like this is going to be what it is, which is a development which is not going to be very pretty for the town of Chatham. So that's it. I was especially enjoyed the attorney, when they start giving his summation, telling you what your job is. Don't you love that, when they sit here and tell you what your job is? But, you know, you've got a bigger job, and that is relative to the people of Chatham, okay? And, and I think you took a shot at it when you tried to get them to reduce the number, and the response you got back was, well, we can't make it, you know? But, you know, somebody shared an email with me, and I'm sure you folks have it, back in the beginning, when the project started in 2024, when Penrose was, was lobbying the, the board and the Trust Board, you know, very clearly about combining both projects, you know, was going to make it economically feasible and allow them to hire one manager. Well, that's great, okay? Makes good sense. But if I add the 48 in West Chatham, and I don't know, what's the number in South, in South Chatham right now? It's 40-something, but far exceeds a 60. So it looks like we got a project which is going to be economically feasible to Penrose, and you're going to make a lot of money, okay? But why don't you just realize, it looks like we've lost West Chatham, okay? If you, you don't approve it and it goes far, the courts will probably overturn and, and force us to do what, what they're suggesting. But I think when we continue the hearings on the West Chatham, excuse me, the South Chatham project, we should approach it upfront and, you know, not last minute, tell them upfront, too many units, you know? Let's at least have one development which looks like a community in Chatham and not a major project. Anyway, good luck and appreciate your efforts, and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Lewis. I live at 21 Cobb Lane, and I just want to say I'm definitely in support of this effort, and I really don't think that you should consider reducing the number of units. The reduction of six units, that would mean six less teachers, veterinary technicians, firefighters, fishermen, you know? If we're going to do it, let's do it in a way that can serve the most people. I bought my house in 97 for $127,000. We all know that that's impossible, but I was a young female who moved here and opened a business, and we need more of that. So we know that opening, you know, having people like that own someplace in Chatham is not going to happen anymore, but at least we can actually set up a place where they can rent with families. If I sold my house right now, I wouldn't even, owning a business, be able to afford to buy something in my neighborhood or in Chatham generally, you know? So we have to do what we can, and we have to get this done, and now is the time to do it. It really is. I respect all the work that you're doing, but it, we just really have to get this done. And I actually live two houses behind 230 Barcliff, which a year or so ago was allowed, it was a modest house, to be torn down and build something, and now, of course, the people who own it now are going to flip it because it's already for sale again, even though they haven't finished building it or even really started. I would much rather, I know, I understand and empathize with the people who live in the area of this new development, I would much rather live near a new development of, you know, young families and workers and fishermen than hearing the construction noise, knowing it's just going to be another McMansion that's going to be vacant for nine months of the year and take up space for nothing positive for the town. out of the year and take up space for nothing positive for the town. I, and I'm not lying because I've lived in the French Quarter, so I know about noise. I would much rather have a whole community development of children and, you know, people picking up elderly people. If you want to put in my neighborhood, awesome, I will never fight you because that's what this town needs. When I come to a meeting, I'm trying to be more involved in the last year or so, I'm one of the youngest people at every friggin' meeting, and guess what, folks?
Language, 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 language.
Oh, sorry, I said frigging, frigging.
I know.
But like, I'm not that young, okay? And the only way we're going to get more people younger than me involved is if they can actually afford to live here, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
And since I'm getting used to going to meetings, I will watch my language next.
Very good, very good. I've been very sensitive about that with three-year-old granddaughter, so.
Hi, Hannah Smith of Chatham. I have a very simple request today, which people that know me, that is a lot for me to do, a nice, simple request. But it is revolving around the Penrose example lease, which I can appreciate is just an example and not what the lease would actually look like, but I did want to just have Penrose, I know this isn't going back and forth with questions, but to address later. The section in the lease, there's a lot of talk about mold and mildew in the example lease. The reason that I find that important is because there's been some issues, and I know that Penrose has a lot of different apartment complexes and housing, so I can appreciate that, you know, mold and mildew will come up. I just think that, you know, when we're looking at the tenants that are going to be living here, I want to make sure that they are protected. So, you know, some of the comments in the lease are that, you know, it's necessary for the resident to provide appropriate climate control and to take other measures to prevent mold and mildew from accumulating in the apartment. Resident further agrees that residents shall be responsible for damage to the premises and residents' property as well as injury to resident and occupants resulting from the residence's failure to comply with the terms of this paragraph. There's other pieces to it, but it just seems like a lot falls on the tenant, which was a concern of mine. There was a specific case, Wells v. Penrose in Maryland in 2024. Thirteen residents of, and some of their children, shared issues related to mold and moisture problems within their units right from the start of the building's opening in 2022. In 2023, representatives from the Environmental Health Consultants LLC conducted testing in 17 apartments. The results found that 16 of the 17 tenant-occupied apartments were confirmed to have varying levels of active mold growth present. Eight of the 16 apartments with mold were further designated as Level 2 or Level 3, meaning that the units would be expected to present a significant health hazard to the occupants. You know, some people might look at this a certain way, but it genuinely, when, I think we should be looking, you know, at the quality of life of the tenants, and I think part of that is, you know, helping to make sure that they're protected, and I think that anyone should want to do that. So that's why I'm just looking for Penrose to hopefully be able to clear up some of the language with the mold and mildew conversation in the lease. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did you state your name, Hannah Smith?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. I'm just going to go to Steve Buckley next online, and then I'll get back to the line that we, that you formed. Thank you for doing that. So Steve Buckley, please go ahead, and then we'll, we'll go back to our line here, and then we'll come back to Elaine Gibbs. That's going to be the order. Steve, you have the floor.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Okay, and there's the little clock. That's great. That's one of the reasons for going offline. You can see the time right there. So you don't have to remind me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I'm going to reserve my right to remind you.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Yes, I brought up an issue which I think is even probably the smallest ask of anything that's gone on for all this time, and that is getting reserved, making the property, the former Buckley property, look like it fits in with the rest of the West Chatham Village District. And if you go all around there, it doesn't look like the old village down by the lighthouse where there's a lot of white going on. West Chatham doesn't look like the old Village District or look like South Chatham, which has a lot of white clabbered as well. The rest of Chatham, between those two areas, is predominantly cedar shingle. And if you put something in there that has off-white clabbered for eight, I'm sorry, 10 buildings, then it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. And so anyway, the last few times, just to summarize, I had asked about this, and the architect for Penrose said, oh, well, white clabbered is the predominant style in Chatham, which I'm sorry, but I've lived here for a while, and it's not. I've gone other places, and Chatham, yes, white gray cedar shingles reminds me of home. So anyway, then it was, oh, they came back last time and said, oh, fire safety, we can't have cedar shingles. I said, that's fine. Synthetic, why not synthetic? And at the last meeting, the Penrose spokesperson said, oh, well, it'll still have a good effect. Yes, the clabbered, the cement, fiber cement siding that they're going to put on will still have a nice design effect, and I'm like, no, it won't. It will not look like Chatham. So anyway, I'd like to know what the standards are. I've reached out to them, and it was relatively late, so I don't, that's okay. But to clear it up, it's like, why can't, at the very least, if we do this, it's probably the smallest thing that could probably be asking for, is to say, can we not have something that looks, that you won't even notice when you drive by, or you'll at least have to notice, that you could drive by this whole project and miss it because it fits in so well, because there's at least some, that doesn't have to be 100% cedar shingle, it could be 50% or any, just something that shows that, because a lot of buildings do, including one, a couple across the street or that have, that are apartment buildings, and they have cedar shingle and clabber. So that's how it can fit in. But if there's some standard for fire safety, what is it? Because then I'll go out and find out if there's nothing in the world that looks like a cedar shingle that will fit the fire safety, and it won't be a missed opportunity to have, at the very least, whatever we build, at least have it look and fit like it's, like it belongs in Chatham. So that's it. And, and yes, I say, there's also, by the way, there's also a 40B in Dennisport, right off Route 28 on Upper County Road. They're putting in some, and the, those buildings are multifamily, and they have synthetic cedar-looking shingles on it, so I can provide that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Rick Levitt, please approach. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Rick Levitt of Barn Hill Road a butter also. I'd like to add just some more context to this conversation. A lot of context was added earlier, and quote from a letter by Penrose. In a letter submitting its proposal to the town, Penrose made the following statement, quote, "Developing both Main Street and Meeting House Road presents many opportunities and would allow, and would allow for economies of scale. Combining the projects can result in cost savings due to streamlined processes and shared resources. To effectively and efficiently develop multifamily housing, Penrose requires a minimum of 60, a minimum of 60 units," end quote. Because Penrose was awarded both sites, Meeting House Road and the Buckley property, sites totaling 90 units, unit count far exceeds, and this has been mentioned by several other speakers here today, far exceeds the 60-unit economies of scale that is required by Penrose. However, the Main Street proposal had to be based on the possibility that Meeting House Road would not be awarded to Penrose. Consequently, Penrose had to maximize Main Street units to come as close as possible to the economical 60 units that they require. As said here before in another meeting, earlier meeting, at 48 units, Mr. Adams, Charlie Adams of Penrose acknowledged that the Main Street site is very, very, very tight. His words. Trimming Main Street unit count to 42 when combined units with units, 42 units at Meeting House Road, gives Chatham 84 affordable housing units. 24 units or 40% more than Penrose's economical 60-unit requirement. A six-unit reduction at Main Street barely moves the needle, if at all, given Penrose's acknowledgement of the economies of scale from its combined development plan. Furthermore, and this is vitally important, Chatham's RFP provides a path for Penrose to negotiate local subsidies and incentives, including buying the land at a lower price. The RFP even says a nominal price instead of the $2.3 million. That will help make 42 units or even 36 units on the Main Street property. Affordable housing development economical when combined with the Meeting House Road project. And thank you very much. I do have that letter, and I'd like to hand it out to you.
Sure, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Elaine Gibbs, as promised, online, and then I will get to the line and stay with that line after that. Ms. Gibbs, please go ahead.
Thank you very, thank you for reading part of my letter. There are just a couple of things that were in there that I would hope you would address. One of them is that even though the property's been surveyed, it is not staked out for our purposes to see the actual boundaries. By my estimation, the frontage on Main Street is about 325 feet long. That is the size of a football field plus an end zone, and it's going to be all clear cut, and I think before any decision is made, that has to be staked out so that the zoning board and the public can see how massive this is going to be. As far as the lease is concerned, the only one we've been provided with is a generic lease that they've used at Nauset Green or wherever. I think we are, we should have a copy of the lease that's going to be used on this property so we know what the parameters are. One of the other things, in addition to the question about whether or not if Penrose goes bankrupt, what does that mean to Chatham? It also, what happens if they sell the property? They just decide they don't want to be here anymore and they sell it? Do we have any input into that, how it's going to go out to bid, if it's going to revert back to us? I think that that's kind of important because they will own this land, and they will own those buildings, and the LDA is totally silent on what happens under those conditions. I think Mr. Singer's September 30th memo and his comments today regarding the 760 CMR actually made our case. We have from the beginning had concerns about safety on and off the property, environmental design concerns as a direct result of the density, and that is the criteria used by the state. For them to, their pro formas show that from going from 48 to 42 units, it's all, it would only be an additional cost of $1.4 million, and they're saying that would ruin their ability to make a profit. They could make that up very easily in the first round because they, they're going to have more units rented here than at Nauset. Everything's been based on Nauset, which is a totally different situation. That is six miles north of the Orleans Rotary on a side road, not in Chatham. So the occupancy is going to be higher, they would probably be able to get higher rents, and again, with six people in a unit that are unrelated, it's going to impact the parking because it's not assigned. I think once 1533 is bulldozed, there's going to be shock, regret, and a lot of finger-pointing because we will not have realized how massive this project is, and we are going to be stuck with it from 30 to 100 years or until the building falls down. And I think we can be a model for affordable housing in Chatham or the poster child for whatnot to do. Let me see, I think, I think that's pretty much it for now, but I think there's a lot of information they haven't provided us. The fact that we didn't know until last, last meeting that there are no basements for personal effects, you know, the quality of life for the people there is really, really important. You know, to say that they should, they were forced, they intentionally reduced parking so people would be required to take public transportation or ride bikes, not taking into consideration storms, little kids out there waiting for buses, and the fact that parents might have to take a bus to go to the hospital.
I'm not sure if you can see the clock, but your time is up. If you want to finish your sentence, I'm happy to let you do that.
That's all right. I think that this needs a lot more work, and I hope the ZBA will not be pushed into this until we have all the data. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham. I'm very concerned about the attempt to amplify the false narrative that weaponizes the community's anxiety about our critical water resources and identifies with no statistical evidence affordable housing as the threat. If you truly believe the town has reached its capacity for new development, then you would be, would be your obligation to restrict all development, not just affordable housing. Week after week, the ZBA issues special variances allowing modest homes to be replaced by massive dwellings. For the most part, these parcels will be lost forever to seasonal investors, turning year-round homes into small boutique hotels. Just one example will be a property that came before your board just last year. It's located at the end of Crowell Road, where an old house that needed demolition was flipped into a 6,800-square-foot residence. It has five bedrooms and five and a half baths. No one mentioned the potential for excess use of water. Again, that was 6,800-square-foot home. I'd like to point out that the largest building being proposed for the Buckley property is 1,000 square feet smaller than that. But still, this kind of private development is allowed to go on unencumbered. None of you mentioned our water reserves while you were reviewing their application. Over the last decade, hundreds of homes like this have been approved by our local boards. Meanwhile, only nine modest individual affordable homes have been built. Affordable housing is not the problem. It's undeniable that the continued tolerance for uncontrolled private development is the biggest threat to our ability to sustain our local character, our year-round community, and protect our critical resources, not affordable housing for year-round residents. I'll ask you all once again to have the courage to look in the mirror and acknowledge the disconnect between your actions and your words. Many of us express concerns for the current housing crisis, yet fail to see our own bias as a contributing factor and an obstacle to real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, welcome.
Hi, I'm Tracy Cannon from South Chatham. I want to, I can speak sort of, you know, romantically and emotionally about it. I've lived here for 40 years. My son has a restaurant. Workers need housing, et cetera, et cetera, and I could do that for a long, long time, but I won't do that. When I am going to talk to you as the executive director of the Chatham Housing Authority, so I am very, very familiar with what is, you know, the need. I see it all day. Every day, my phone rings, my emails are full. I had two today that were particularly heartbreaking. So then, obviously, we all know the need is enormous. But the one point that I'm going to make, and then I'm going to let it go, is that density seems to be the big issue here, obviously, clearly. Multiple times, most times, when I see people I haven't seen in a while and they say, what are you doing, Trace? I say, oh, I'm working the director of the Housing Authority, and they go, the what? And I say, the Housing Authority, the Chatham Housing Authority. And they go, where's that? And I go, it's on Crowell Road. It's a facility on Crowell Road. It's got, you know, for low-income people. And they go. And they go, "I don't really know where that is." And I take great pride in that, that people don't go, "Oh, you're low-income housing, yeah." No, they don't. They don't even know I'm there. And I have elderly, non-elderly family units. And I have 69 of them. And no one even knows I'm there. This is not Lake Street. Lake Street is separate. This is just me. And I think if you're talking about the difference between 42 and 48 units, frankly, all I can think of is those six families. They need housing. They all need it, and there's so many of them. And in closing, I'd like to say, as I do every time I speak about housing, if you have any questions or want to know what the temperature of the need for housing in this town is, my office is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00. I am happy to talk to anybody. And I really, really welcome any questions and any input. But the density for me is just the most important part, just to know that it isn't, it isn't, I just don't think it, it's as dramatic as everybody thinks it's going to be, those six units. But it's very dramatic for those six families. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Carol Kenner. I live in South Chatham. My family and I strongly support the Penrose proposal. Our son is severely disabled. He is cared for 24/7 by staff at Capabilities. And the direct care staff are paid $19.67 per hour. We are losing staff at Capabilities and other agencies throughout the mid-Cape and lower Cape rapidly. We can't keep qualified people. We need housing such as Penrose is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Priscilla Smith. I've vacationed in Chatham for 50 years. I've owned a home here for 20, for 32 years and lived here for 24 years. I fully support Mary Ann Lewis's statement about families and the importance of this project for young families to live here. I sat back there and thought, what would this town look like in 20 years with no young children running around, with no primary school, with no playgrounds to see children? We'll see children in, I won't, but well, some people will see children in July and August when, when the visitors come. But it's going to look very different. And for those of us who are older, imagine what it'll look like in 20 years. We need to do this now. I have one more story. When we moved here from New Jersey, close to Rumson, with my four-year-old grandson, he was used to going to birthday parties at his age that were costing $8,000 to $10,000. The first birthday party he was invited to here, which is so typical of Chatham, my daughter and I dropped him off at a house. There were 10 four-year-olds running around with bubbles and throwing tennis balls around and chasing them. And then the mom came out, she put down a blanket and they all sat on the blanket and she came out with the little Dixie cups. That was the birthday, the most wonderful birthday he's ever had. And that's what Chatham was like. Hopefully, we can keep it like that and make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir. You are next.
Thank you, Mike Shell. I'm going to tell a story. You've heard from me on all the, the, what I'll call the merits of the case. I'm just going to tell you a very brief story from my experience on the Affordable Housing Trust. Relatively early in that service, I was, I had a longtime multi-generational resident reach out to me to see if the Affordable Housing Trust might be interested in talking about acquiring the resident's property, which had been in the family for a long time. A price was mentioned, very reasonable. Size of the property roughly the same as West Chatham, a little bigger. Really, before I had any chance to do anything with that, I might have had a conversation or two, a developer came in, bought the property. And today, there is one house almost completed on the property that will be sold for multi-millions of dollars and another one planned. I, I think, and I, I tell you the story simply because there's a lot of talk about, well, if we had this, if that, if the other, if Penrose this, if Penrose that. In the big picture, I, I'm here speaking on behalf of using what little land we have in this town, owned by the, owned by the town, to, to create housing for families. You've heard the case for families. I, I just want to endorse that and say, I hope you will take the side of families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
My name is Richard Crete. I live at 1934 Main Street, which is about half a mile west of 1533. I've owned property in Chatham for more than 25 years. I've lived here for a couple of years now. And following Chatham closely, as I have over the years, one thing that's been constant is that we have a housing problem here in Chatham. And it's getting worse and worse. And we have here an opportunity to seize something and come up with the start of a solution to that housing problem. And it seems to me that, that we should seize that opportunity and not lose it. I think Mr. Dykens was very eloquent with his statements about the possible directions that we, we could go here. So we've heard a lot of reasons, but to me, it's very simple. We need this housing. Families need this housing. And I encourage you to approve 48 units expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you. You are next, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Beistrum and I live here in Chatham. And for 50 years, one of my hats I've been wearing is that of a sociologist. And when you deal with sociology, you find that one of the most pressing problems we have is many people are afraid of what is known as culture lag. And the best way for me to explain that is when I was growing up, there was something, a Dick Tracy watch that you could, Dick Tracy could call people on and it was really cool. And I said, "That'll never happen." Well, now, we get a cellphone. And I'm still a, a victim of culture lag to a certain extent because oftentimes, if I need to order something on the cellphone, I have to talk to my expert, my seven-year-old grandson, who can do anything on that that I can't do. So I, I think one of the big problems, if we stop and we look at, at it, is that many people are afraid of change. In 2005, the town of Chatham hired me to open the community center. I was the first director of the community center. It had taken about three town meetings, I think, before they decided that's what they wanted to do with the old high school, make it into a community center. It's a fantastic accent. It's a great star in, in the crown of the town of Chatham, which is a wonderful place to live. 2010, I was on the, the town appointed me to be on the interim school committee to form a Montmorey Regional High School and the elementary schools. I, I think it's a great project. It was a great project then. It took them at least four or five times to get to regionalize. It started back, I believe, in the 1960s. They started talking about, they brought it to town meeting, it didn't pass, da, 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 da. Finally, it did. Today, it's a wonderful school. I have a 13-year-old granddaughter who's visiting for half a year from Germany. She's going to the eighth grade. She loves it. She thinks it's a fantastic school. The Chamber of Commerce, 2012, I was president of the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. One of the big issues we had that year was would the Merchants Association ever really get along with the rest of the Chamber of Commerce? Today, they're working hand-in-hand, the Merchants Association, the Chamber. They do the pumpkin people in a few weeks. They do the stroll. They do the art in the park. It's come full-scale, it's working great. A private example of that, Wecan. Wecan is a charitable organization. In the early 2000, I was on the board of that and I, for three or four years, I was president of that organization. I remember one meeting we had. At that, at one particular meeting sticks out in my mind because of financial issues when we were first getting started. We tried to figure out whether we should shut it down after two or three years of trying and walk away or continue. We had a meeting, we passed that by one vote. And look where it is today. It's, it's phenomenal. It's a great example of a private-public partnership to help women who need it. I mean, you can go on and on and on. And if you just go back in history, seriously, I know this sounds corny, the pilgrims. The pilgrims took a chance and came here. And look what they did. Look what happened to, to us because of that, really. We should, the sky really, I honestly don't think that the sky is falling. Florence Selden, who used to be a selectman and was also chair of the Affordable Housing Committee here in Chatham, as I was at one point, I, I once said to Florence, "Why are you working so hard for affordable housing?" And Florence said to me, "You know, it's a really worthy cause. It's something we really need." And I agree with Florence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, I think, unless there's somebody else? We're going to take a break after this. There is someone else? Go ahead.
Ryan Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. For the record, I did reach out to Charlie Adams and asked him if he would be willing to do homeownership. He told me it wasn't the RFP.
We don't know who Charlie Adams is, so if you want to call, I mean, we might know, but...
Charles Adams, the guy that works for Penrose.
Okay, just, just for the public, that's fine, that's fine.
And I did, and I did meet with Mike Shell for three hours to try and convince him, to convince Charlie Adams to change, to change the homeownership. That didn't work. I just wanted that for the record. I agree with one of the previous speakers that we do need housing for fishermen. I'm not sure if this is appropriate. I'm just wondering where they're going to keep their boats and fishing equipment and dinghies and stuff in this particular complex. Another speaker said that we, you know, you can't buy a house in Chatham. If we had picked the right project, you would be able to buy a house in Chatham. We do need housing in Chatham, but this isn't the right time. I was made aware that one of the projects in Hyannis, the one around BJ's, was built $50 million and then flipped and sold for $150 million. So I'm a little curious, reading the LDA, I don't know if Town Council can help me out with some of this, but it's, what is it, section 5, 1, C1. It says, "In the event designated developer assigns its interest in the agreement and/or the property to an affiliate of the designated developer, which shall include the same principles, officers, members, and wholly owned, controlled by the designated developer. It shall not, it shall notify the town..."
Do you want to just try to crystallize your question?
So I, I think that, I think this means they can sell it. You know, I'm wondering if they can sell it or change, you know, ownership or something alongs. I don't, because I don't quite understand it. So that would be an issue, a possible loophole. Also, when it's used with, if they file for, for closure or bankruptcy or something, it, they can take it down to only 25% affordable housing, which would kind of defeat the whole purpose of it. And this is a for-profit corporation and, you know, the business is to make money. So I'm pretty concerned about those possible loopholes if someone could look into it or explain it to me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sir?
Good afternoon. David Whitcomb, 41 Indian Trail, West Chatham. I'm a little reluctant to come up here because I'm sure you've heard everything from everyone and I think you're probably just as ready to make a decision as those of us are to hear your decisions. So I just want to talk a little bit about our history of affordable housing and lack thereof. In 1972, we built the Anchorage, which Ms. Cannon was, manages with 41-bedroom units for senior citizens and disabled persons. In 1988, we built 19 studio units for the elderly who require supportive living services. And in 1998, we built eight three-bedroom, two two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom homes for families. And that was it, 1998. The next project we had was, Mr. Nixon was the chairman of the zoning board of appeals at the time. It was the only other 40B that came before the zoning board of appeals. And it was approved to build 47 houses on Lake Street. And I think the, the process to get that was a lot less than this has been, the six-month, the interrogation, the going back and forth to get to that, that situation. So with the exception of 10 other Habitat for Humane houses, three houses on Marconi, that brought a total of 60 houses since, 60 units since 1998 for affordable housing, somewhere around two per year. We are woefully inadequate of affordable housing. This project from Penrose isn't perfect. It might not even be ideal, but it's necessary. If this doesn't go through, this has taken us around six years. We started, the property was bought in 2021. When it's completed, it'll be, what, 2026, 2027? Six years if you add that on to, if this doesn't go on six years, seven years from now is 2030, 2031. This is a project that really needs your, your, your support. And I hope that you'll be able to do that in a timely manner so that we can move on with this. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Anybody else online or in the room? No? Okay, we're going to take a short break and be back by 10 minutes of four. Okay, we're going to take a short break and be back by 10 minutes of four. We are back, okay? So this would be the time where Penrose would have an opportunity to discuss what they heard in the letters and from the public, if you'd like to take that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. It's actually going to be very quick. I just want, you know, we have heard, after six months, passionate opinions on both sides of the equation. There are people who are strongly in support and there are people strongly opposed. And frankly, with all of the concessions and modifications that Penrose has made, we know we're never going to be able to satisfy everyone. I mean, you have heard the same arguments repeatedly, both pro and con, at all of your meetings. And so there's really, there are no other additional answers we have in response to what we've heard today. I think we've responded already. We believe respectfully that with all of the modifications that have been made, that the right balance has been struck for this development of the property. And we welcome any questions you have, and that's our response. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to point out that I want to do a little bit rebuttal for our group just on one topic, that the rules provide, I guess they used to provide, that the Zoning Board of Appeals, at the beginning of a process, would ask for a pro forma, and I understand that that's not the case anymore, I think in 2008, yeah, that it changed, and the time for that, indeed, is towards the end. And so we are squarely within our timeframe and right to have asked for a pro forma exactly when we did, and if we had done it earlier on, we would have been outside of the rules. So I just want to make sure the public understands that this isn't like coming out of nowhere, it's coming out exactly where it was supposed to come out of, towards the end of the process. So with that, I'm going to talk, have our board start to talk about what they wanted to get answers about, that they didn't maybe, that people brought up, or things that you want to see as conditions possibly, or just any kind of comments and questions. Let's just start with Steve.
Hi, good afternoon. I have a couple of questions. One, I was going to ask you, what you already addressed, was whether or not these units were going to be sprinkled, and I think you said they were.
Correct.
But is, I don't see on the plans anywhere if, where there is a second means of egress for any of the, especially the upper floors, how is that being handled?
Going to ask the architect to respond to that, if, through the chair. Yeah, please, please. Hello, Paul Adman, architect. They are not required by code to have a second means of egress due to the configuration and the travel distance from the living areas to their front doors. They're designed to meet fire and building codes.
Okay.
Okay, I would think that there might be some moral obligation here other than building code, but okay. The next question I have has to do with, well, I guess I'll take these in order of difficulty. How is, what, the Meeting House Road project is 42 units. How is that project profitable at 42 units and the one on Main Street cannot be?
Before Rio responds to that, through the chair, I'd like to ask, maybe to ask Town Council, how far down the road of Meeting House and Main Street we can go, you know, given the hearing and what's open. We have an answer, but I just would, just...
Sure.
I don't want to get into trouble with...
Attorney Tallaman, I know you're there.
I am here. Can folks hear me?
We can, thank you. Did you hear the question?
Sorry, I don't, I did. I'm not sure, I'm not too concerned about the answer, about the ability to answer the question. We're not opening up a hearing or a discussion or deliberations on the other project. The board member just asked a question, kind of comparing economics by and between the two. I wouldn't expect that the board will now start entertaining on the merits of the density of the, of the Meeting House Road project. He's just asking a, basically a finance question. I think that's, that's fair game.
And also, Attorney Tallaman, do you think this, at this hearing, there should be some explanation, some details about the pro forma that we had, or should we just wait to talk about getting an expert? Or do you think there should be more discussion about what's presented?
Well, I think that's up to you, and it's certainly up to Penrose as well. Penrose has made their case, they've submitted materials. If they're comfortable resting on those materials, then the next question for the board would be whether or not they even want to still go there on the density question, and that's an open question, I suppose. And then secondarily, if it's still an issue that the board wishes to pursue or at least contemplate as a potential condition while preserving all their rights, then the next question would be whether or not the board...
Oh.
...or rationale for the reduction...
You're breaking up a little bit, counsel, can you just start at the beginning of that sentence?
Okay, so I think where I may have lost you is, I think the secondary question here would be...
Nope, now we lost you. You might have to call in on the telephone.
Satisfied that the... Can you hear me?
We missed, we missed it again, it was, it's in and out.
Yeah, no, I think I'll be getting, I apologize that I had to jump in the car, but...
That's okay.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the secondary question is whether or not, if the board wants to pursue the density question, and if the board can tie it into a local concern, which is really kind of a low bar at this juncture, frankly, but if they can do all of that, whether or not they are satisfied with the information provided by Penrose as to whether or not it forms a good basis for them to then deliberate on that question, whether or not they want to impose a reduction in density or not, or if they feel that they would want someone to review the pro forma and other materials provided by Penrose.
Okay, okay, I think we get the gist of that. We, we'll get to that question, whether or not we would like to...
...for calculation of reasonable return.
Okay, we'll call on you, will you be available?
Multi-part analysis there, that the board would have to undertake. Yes, yeah, the reason, car is I knew that this was going to go, I do have it, but I wanted to make sure I didn't miss any of it, so I took advantage of the break to re-sign in on the, from the car.
Oh, that's okay, we'll come back to you then. I think we get, we have an understanding of where we want to go, well, what we want to discuss going. But, okay, Andrew?
Rio and Carmen can answer that, I just would like to, since what Jay just said, just like to again note, as I noted in my letter to you, that if you decide to go down the route of a condition, a potential condition, or, or even peer review on that, that we have a reservation in that letter in providing you the pro formas, because we respectfully don't believe that the board has identified and articulated concerns that meet 760 CMR, 5605, 6A4, whatever, that section. So I just want that on the record, if we're ultimately going down that road. But we do have, for the finance question, as Jay mentioned...
It's on the record, yep. Okay, yep.
Sure, sure. So when, when we originally responded to the RFP, we were pretty clear upfront with the town that we would only do Meeting House if it was being done in conjunction with Main Street. We could do Main Street at the 48 units, which was below our normal 60-unit threshold, because there were some efficiencies from our local presence in Orleans and Eastham. But the 42 units at Meeting House wouldn't work on its own like Main Street. If we were successful with Main Street, we could capitalize similarly, as we do on Main Street, with some efficiencies at Meeting House by having Main Street, including specifically shared staff, like the supportive service coordinator, the second maintenance tech would be shared. So there would also be economies of scale from purchasing service contracts like landscaping and snow removal, which would make a normal 42-unit project on its own not really be economical. It would be almost similar to a second phase of Main Street, bringing it up to a 90-unit combined project.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? Earlier, you said, and I'm going to quote, "Every project should stand on its own merit." Can you just square that with what you're saying now? Do you remember saying that, I think?
I said that.
You did?
Yeah.
So I can't help, I just can't get past that.
Yeah, so when our investors or the state agency review these projects, they will be reviewed separately. The projects will need to stand on their own. I think the reason why for us, right now in front of you, is Main Street. No one knows what's going to happen with Meeting House. This project will get financed first, it's going to be first in, in with an application. The, I guess the proceeding with this first, this will be the first of the two. And we cannot assume that the second, that Meeting House will happen when we proceed with Phase One, or with Main Street. So when we close on Main Street and start construction and start occupying, we won't have Meeting House as an additional kind of, to share any sort of resources, or to... So we will have to hire a full-time property manager, and there is no sort of sharing that is possible if we needed to. But we have budgeted for Main Street and Meeting House to each have their own property manager, but that is kind of our, kind of best-case scenario, and that is our kind of base-case scenario. But there is no guarantee, I guess I'm not explaining this very well.
Can you see...
There's no guarantee. So I guess each project's going to be financed separately and owned separately, every separate investors. But the economics of a 42-unit that's sharing staff with an existing 48-unit is superior to then a 42-unit not sharing expenses.
Okay, but then they don't really stand on their own merit then, do they?
Well, I guess we're quibbling about the definition of stands on its own merit for the, so you would be right that 42 units, I mean, we're agreeing with you, we submitted the pro forma showing 42 units doesn't work on its own.
Okay, I just wanted to try to get some clarity on that. Okay, Steve, please go ahead.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because I would think that the Meeting House Road project may be more difficult to build and may require additional expenses. You know, the topography is, it's topologically challenging, there's more site work that has to go on there, and there's a greater, it seems like there's a greater outlay of expenses to get the project off the road. So I'm just wondering how that 42-unit project can support itself.
Well, I think I said earlier, we wouldn't do Meeting House without Main Street.
Okay.
So you're right, it wouldn't really pencil out on its own. And it is more expensive construction, although on that deal, I don't... Although on that deal, I don't want to get into too much details. There is grant funds available for improvement to get access because of the ravine that might not be as available on Main Street. But yes, the Mean House would, without Main Street, which is what we said at the beginning at the RFP response, we couldn't do that on its own.
And then one other thing, it's a little bit easier, I think. The questions get easier. We talked, I think, last time about maybe making the lighting a little bit more Cape Cod friendly or Chatham friendly. Has anything been done to do that? And do you have any examples of what you propose?
Hi, I'm Mark Whorfville with Crowley Cottrell. I'm the landscape architect on the project. So we're looking into that actively. It's a little bit more complicated than a fair swap because the more ornamented fixtures tend to have more reflective qualities, which can lead to uplight, making them not dark sky friendly. So we're working with our partners to select fixtures that kind of aesthetically meet the nautical theme. And once those have been identified and selected, we have to go through the engineering of it to make sure we meet the same performance of zero light at the property lines, no uplighting, and even light levels that have been proposed for the community.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping that on the list. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Dave Veach, we know you're online. I'd like you to go next, if you would, while you're still feeling energetic.
I would like to, I'd like to reserve the right to, you know, not comment at this point until after. I've heard other remarks. Thank you.
Okay, until other people make their remarks? Is that what you said? Okay, okay.
That's correct.
I will grant you that. Yes, sure. Ed Acton, please.
I guess I'd like to discuss maybe conditions for the project. I think Thad Eldridge and Stuart Smith now have brought up perhaps a pull-off for mass transit. And I'm wondering if you had put any thought into that or if you thought that was capable at all. It does seem to make sense to have an area for the, you know, a mass transit bus to perhaps pull off. I imagine you'll have, that's a state road. It's probably similar to the permitting process you have to do for the crosswalk. But I guess that's my first question, if you could address that and if you could handle that perhaps like you're handling the crosswalk to ask for permission for that.
Yeah, so this would be presumably something in the current, right away, the state DOT of that road. Joe, is there anything maybe you could help with on this?
Yeah, the buses go down Route 28 now, and I don't think there are any other pullouts that I know of. I think they just stop in the road.
I guess if Joe could let me know if he thinks that's something that could be.
Sure, Joe Henderson, Horsley Witten. You're asking if we could put a pull-off in front of the site to accommodate a bus? I mean, there's, right now, there's a sidewalk, so we would have to manipulate the walk there, but.
What's your opinion in general on that?
I don't know that there's enough. I don't know that it's needed, to be honest. I guess it would, number one, depend on whether the state would. That would be the first priority, right? Would they approve something like that? The site could probably accommodate it between the two entrances. But other than, I think you could potentially fit one there, yes. But it would be up to the state if they would approve something like that.
And would that be something you would look into or could look into?
Sure, we can look into, yeah, what it might look like. Sure.
Thank you. The second condition, or I had brought up electricity costs in Massachusetts, and these being rental units. And I'm concerned about the residents and the electricity costs there. The project calls for solar. I think right now, when I read the plans, it says you're just going to provide conduit for the solar for future solar.
Correct. The reason we do that, there will probably be some level of solar because we're designing to passive house, which in of itself means very little utility bills. They're super efficient. There's, in terms of air coming in and out, and then the makeup air will usually have ERVs to transfer the heat from the outgoing air into the incoming air, I mean, incoming air. So there, these type of passive house projects usually have utility bills 70% lower than typical utility bills. But there'll be some level of solar usually to meet that passive house requirements, being like net zero overall. So there'll be some design, but we design all the buildings to have the conduit for future solar. Usually that's something at the end of a job. If there's project savings, that's usually something we'll use it for. There are some costs. It's usually one of the things that gets valued engineered when you're competitive, when you're applying for these competitive subsidies. And there are certain cost caps that the state wants to see. That's usually some of the low-hanging fruit to get your costs in line with what the state's looking for. But there's been several projects where we end up with some savings at the end of the job, and that's usually one of the areas, it's usually the first priority of the savings is to install solar. And also, there could be future programs that aren't available now to help cover the costs of the solar. There's a program opening in Connecticut. And so having the conduit there gives us the opportunity, if something comes up once we're fully designed and engineered, that will help support the cost of adding the solar. We could take advantage of it.
I'm actually surprised Massachusetts, given the funding they're providing, isn't making it mandatory. And I think that would be a condition I'd be looking for, is that you maximize solar and that the credits or the money actually goes back to the renters and not necessarily to Penrose. The next thing on my list was, I had mentioned an irrigation well, and I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Yes, we can look into an irrigation well on-site to, for future, for landscaping. We haven't, we haven't done any designing towards it. I know that there's a permitting process through DEEP to get a license for irrigation well, but usually it's not that difficult. And some of it depends on what's the neighboring property's use. But that's something, that's something we can definitely look into.
Okay. The, it's been brought up a couple times now, basements. This was designed slab-on-grade. I assume that's based on construction costs?
Also passive house.
Also passive house.
It's very difficult to get the passive house rating of net zero overall with the basement. Usually we have, and I don't. Yeah, the vapor barriers under the slab to prevent any air from coming up through. It also helps with radon as well, but it's almost impossible to get through passive house with having basements. But we have exterior storage. So in lieu of the basement storage, what we've done is we've appended storage to the buildings for the residents, and each unit has its own storage.
Okay. And then the issue of washer and dryers has come up. Is, do the residents have the availability to put washer and dryers in their units?
Yeah, we will have washers and dryers in the units.
We're going to furnish them.
You're going to furnish them? Okay.
Yeah, comes with washer and dryers.
That answers that. And then, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with density. I still am not a fan of the community building. What does, what is the cost of that community building?
You can call it by whatever name you want to call it. It's that big building right in the front.
Yes, we don't have the individual cost from that, from our contractor's pricing. He hasn't broken it out by buildings, so I don't have that handy. We could get it, but, but, you know, I think we're unwilling on our end to remove it for the reasons we've discussed at the previous hearings.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Ginny, and then Paul.
Okay, I've got a lot of notes here, so forgive me if I'm jumping around a little. Mr. Singer, I think in the very beginning of our meeting tonight, you said, you began today by talking about density and kind of like that's a really important topic, or it's our, however you opened today. And my recollection several hours ago is that you said that that was addressed through setbacks or primarily addressed through setbacks. Am I characterizing how you opened today?
What I was referring to with the statement you said is that in order for the board to be authorized to look at a pro forma, to examine a potential condition above density, you have to have identified a, and I'm not looking at it right now, but you've had to identify the health, safety, welfare, something expressly that was due to the size. You'd have to say that because you have too many buildings, you don't have enough parking, or something like that. What I noted was that from my review of the record, both listening and attending, is that I had heard as part of that discussion of the board at the last meeting, when three of you and the son like you with your letter had requested a review, I heard three comments, and that's what I was referring to. Your letter, and I'm paraphrasing, so. Your letter had talked about if there was one less building in the back, you might be able to further improve the setbacks. So that was what I was referring to. And then I noted water and general wear and tear, what it was. So that's what I was referring to.
Okay, that, thank you for clarifying. That is how I remember it as well. I want to remind, though, that in my letter that was read at the September 18th meeting, I said that I was okay with the setbacks. The setbacks were just, you know, I wrote out several things, and I actually said that regarding, that Penrose's notation, number four, page one of September 10th supplemental memorandum regarding the setback, the abutters, noting that the previous site revisions addressed my concerns. I said that in the setback section. Okay, what I also said in that letter was the very last one, density. And I said that it is one of the most frequently mentioned and frankly, most important topics. So I was very distinct in setbacks being separate from density. And so, and I also specifically said, to the point you just made about connecting it to the broader state, is I said density correlates to traffic and parking. So now, I didn't, I wasn't here, and I didn't get into the specifics of that, but I did. I think that would be, would fall under the local concern of safety. And another thing that I've been very consistent about is trees. I've mentioned that throughout. I think that correlates to the environment. And I also have been very consistent in talking about streetscape and the open space, the visual appeal. Mr. Buckley talked about it today. It's, and I have, at our, at, in my letter, I correlated that to the management office, and I have asked about the management office a couple of times as well. So I do believe I've been consistent. And another thing I want to mention is that the 48 to 42, I brought up in our second hearing. That's not a new thing that we just brought up in our last, or recent discussion. And I think at that time, I mentioned, and Rio, you said, we actually did address this, you know, Ms. Fenwick, because, but I think what you were referring to is it was being addressed primarily through the subsequent hearings in the context of setbacks. So 48 to 40, and I did say at one point that the 48 to 42 would help reduce the pressure on the setbacks. That was a constant discussion at almost every meeting. But that wasn't the only thing, and I clarified that in my, in my letter. So I think that. So I just wanted to kind of get, to say that, that I think maybe, we've had a lot of hearings. How many, Sarah? Seven, six or seven? And it was mentioned tonight in one of the comments, one of the readers, that it, he was a little taken aback that we're just bringing that up. And I wanted to clarify that we aren't just bringing that up. That has been brought up. And it was brought up very early on. Okay, so the reason that I mentioned density as the last item in the letter that was read at the meeting on the 18th is because I do think that the density connects to safety. And specifically, three acres, we've talked about three acres. You've mentioned your other properties. Wareham is 16 acres. Eastham is 11 acres. Meeting House is 3.7, and Main Street is three. So I think 48 units on three acres is 16 units per acre. That's dense. That has been brought up by Ms. Gibbs and many others that have written in. So I just want to, I just want to make it clear that that is not a new thing that we're bringing up. And if you want to correlate it to safety, then I think it squarely correlates to safety. I don't know if, how many people can safely live on three acres of land with 16 units per acre? So that would be, that would be one comment that I'd like to make, not really a question. The other one is the trees. I think that correlates specifically to the environment. Mark has done a great job with the landscaping plan and updating that. And for the most part, I'm pleased with it, but I still think there's no getting around the fact that in order to build this very nicely proposed complex, you are going to have to remove a lot of trees. And now, Rio, you're mentioning that the irrigation, you're unsure about that. And we have a massive landscape plan now with more established trees was the commitment. And I don't know how you're going to save those and preserve them without an irrigation plan because I don't think you can use town water if that's the plan to like have. I don't know what the plan is, but I think that's an important follow-up. And I would say, Mr. Singer, that I think that trees connects to the environment. Okay, so just trying to help with some of the things that you've brought up from the, what do you call it? The local concerns. I think that's your term. And then.
The bylock. And so, yeah, I didn't make up the term.
Okay, well, you, okay, you've mentioned it. And then I think the last thing is the open space, which is the management office that I have brought up in the past. Because I have talked about streets in, mostly in the context of streetscape and how that management office with the two other buildings and all the buildings behind it really create a look, a sense of density on what is a street that is a mile and a half, not even, from downtown Chatham. And so I do think that that, that I agree, and I have brought that up a few times as well, the management office. And how open space is important to the residents. And I think for that reason, I re-raised the management building, specifically removing it or relocating it either to the back of Main Street or to Meeting House. And so tonight, you've come in here, you've listened to, you've heard my letter, you've listened to my comments throughout the previous hearing. So I am disappointed that there's no consideration to go to the 42 because that was, for those reasons that I mentioned in my letter, I thought I would like to revisit the 48 to 42 for those reasons. And you have, and that's why I asked for the pro forma, to see if that could, because I've heard repeatedly, it's not financially viable. And so that's just why I asked for it. And you've come in today, you've shared it previously, but we have it now. But what I, what I'm also hearing you say, though, is that you have it, you can review it, and we will. But you're not going to go to 40, to 48, so, I mean, to 42 from 48. So I think that the, I would like to have the management office, you know, that part be revisited. So anyway, that's, I said it was going to be a little bit railing, and it was. But any, any questions about what I said?
Through the chair, no questions, but just a response. I agree with many of the things you said. To develop any project, you're cutting down trees. And you have to. I mean, otherwise you can't build something. But, and so I understand what you're saying about density, about trees, about streets, excuse me, streetscape. Say that one fast. What I, where we respectfully are responding is that we believe we have responded, not maybe to the way you're talking about with reducing the units or reducing the management building, because both of those, as the applicant has said repeatedly, are very important to its program. Now, the management building has been made smaller. You know, as, as you recall, it was made smaller. This project, unlike another design, we believe one of the biggest benefits of it is it has that community's open space in the middle of the property, which is screened from the street by that building, and the grove of trees, the natural, really nice grove of trees that are there, that Penrose is committing to, to keep. Most subdivisions are clear cut. They're stripped, absolutely. They're proposing not to do that. So what, what I was trying to communicate is that we hear what you're saying, and we believe we've been very responsive in trying to preserve as much trees as possible while accommodating the balancing of needing housing. The density is something that, so you look at the density. So you look at what, how that manifests, as you said. Well, we have enough parking, and we demonstrated throughout several meetings why the parking that's proposed, that was reduced at your request, works. We have sprinklers in the building. The heights of the buildings were reduced in size. You know, parking and dumpsters and things were pulled back from the buildings, were pulled back from the property. So we are not willing to reduce the density or remove that management building, but I believe the applicant has been very responsive to try to address not just your concerns, but others, to make this a project, again, it's a balance. As someone said earlier, you know, the, the, was it the, don't let the enemy, the perfect be the enemy of the good, or something like that. That's, and it's a struggle for an applicant, as well as a struggle for the board. So that, but we've heard you, yes.
Yeah. Okay. No, thank you for, for that additional, those additional comments. I mean, at the end of the day, we have been so attentive, and, and for all good, the good reasons, on the abutters, and by improving those setbacks, which has been the vast majority of our meetings, you haven't removed, you're, you're, you're squeezing it in, and it's just more congestion, so less parking as a result of that, you're right. And we still haven't lost a building, we still haven't lost, so we're, we're still working with the same infrastructure and just crowding it more. And that, that's why I wanted to open the density conversation back up. I still think that the management building would relieve some of that pressure, or one of the buildings in the back, which is the 48 to 42. So that, that's just, and I, I, I do think I've been consistent throughout the six or seven hearings on those particular points, so that's all I have today.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul. As promised.
Well, thank you. Let me just pick up with a couple of easy questions, I guess. We, we heard from the Levitts about the question of moving a dumpster and dealing with some parking spaces. Have you said, no, we can't move that dumpster, and we can't deal with those parking spaces, or is that still pending as an issue?
No. I can, I can respond to Mr. Simple. Yeah, we, I think we have noted when, when Rick first brought them up, that there was totally reasonable comments. So we, we reduced the parking near here, near the border of his property from eight to five to three in different iterations. We've pulled the dumpster back from the setback, and then we pulled it back a second time, even further away. We put a six-foot stockade fencing around it, and most recently, we've put a hedge of evergreens in front of it as well. So we have been responsive to it.
Right. Right. I understand that. I, I appreciate that. But where you're at right now is, no, you don't think you can go down more than the three parking spaces, and that you don't think you can move the dumpster to a different location, so it's not so close to a neighbor property? Is that, is that where you're at?
That is correct. If you move the dumpster behind the management building, setting aside that two of you don't like it, there's no way to act, you can't access it. You, you can't get a truck to back into it. It's, it's in the wrong, without cutting down trees and open space.
Or losing the parking spaces.
So again, it's, it's this balancing. So, yeah, the, the, it's been locate, relocated twice. It's been screened much more heavily than it was, but not able to relocate it elsewhere on the site.
So, so that's the, that's the issue, is you would not be able to put it to another location because you can't access it and use it effectively?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I hadn't heard that, so I understand what you're saying. Let me ask a second question, and that is, relates to landscaping. As you know, I've talked about streetscape quite a bit, and assuming that this project goes forward, one of the issues it's going to be facing the town is the number of people who will see it from the road, because that's going to be 90% of Chatham going past it and visitors. When I look at the aerial perspective and the street perspective, what I see is the potential for adding a couple of trees, and I'm looking at the two forms that you provided us about preserved site trees, which shows two preserved straight site trees between building two and three, and some preserved tree sites in the area of the common area. It doesn't look to me as if there are any preserved tree sites on the, on the site other than those. Is that correct?
Make sure we understand.
Yeah. Mark Whorfel again. So there, there's a few locations where, so, let's see, trying to get this, there we go. So the area referring to is in the center. There's a big clump of existing trees here, as well as here. We're also preserving.
So there's been trees you're preserving.
These are tree, existing trees that are being preserved. There's a clump of trees along the eastern property line that'll be preserved. We have a, a pair of trees on the western side that'll be preserved.
Right.
Along Main Street, the only existing trees on the site are located in this area, as well as two evergreens that are, they're set back quite a bit here, and a, a tree, there's an existing tree in this area that's kind of growing into the utility pole. This, this tree was not surveyed, but because of its location with the utility pole, we know where it is, and that is staying. We have no, no, no reason to remove that. It's a beech tree, I believe.
So there's another tree there that is going to be preserved that's not on your site?
Yep. And, and again, that's, it's in the right of way. On, on the northeast side, or northeast corner of the site, these existing trees are at a much lower elevation to the road. And because we are enhancing the sidewalk by extending it to the eastern property line, as well as providing accessible entrances into building nine, the regrading that needs to happen there to, to make all of that work means that those trees are, are not able to be saved.
Right. So, and going back to what I said before, the three locations that we're talking about, or four locations are what I said, in terms of where there are going to be existing trees, it'll be preserved.
As well as the enlarged buffer along the southern side of the property.
Correct. I understand. So looking at it from the streetscape, looking at it from the road, there's basically nothing is being preserved in that area, other than what's in the common area, what's on the border towards the Levitts, and a few trees on the far right-hand downside.
That's correct, but there's also not much there to preserve.
Okay.
When, when we did our site visit and, and site inspection, there, there are, there's a large existing tree that's kind of right in the middle of what would be building one. There's those two evergreens that I spoke about, which are in poor health. I think one of them is even missing the top of the tree. And, but when you look at the site, the existing driveway that comes here and the, and the existing house, there's large areas of lawn in, in this area and over here, where there just, there aren't trees to preserve, which is also why we utilize those areas in the project.
All right. I, I understand that. So that, that brings me to the question of the trees that you're going to put in. There are a number of trees that are shown on Main Street that presumably are there to assist in presenting the overall concept of the, of the subdivision to the road and to the people. Those trees, I think, are similar to the trees that are used at the village at Nauset Green in Eastham, are they not?
I haven't been to the village of Nauset Green, so I can't speak to that directly, but what I can say is that the, the trees that are being proposed are of significant size. They're three to three and a half inch caliber trees. You know, a typical tree you would see at a home center is an inch to an inch and a half, so imagine three times the size of that. And we're proposing street trees that are robust and suitable for these environments. They can tolerate the salt from the road, the kind of more of a harsh environment that you would get in this situation than, say, in the backyard of, of a house.
Well, we had, at one of our hearings, we had some photographs of the village at Nauset Green submitted by Mr. Marcel, which you perhaps recall, but these trees, and I've been up and looked at the village a couple of different times, are basically the kind of trees that you seem to be specking for the frontage that we're dealing with here. And they're really very thin. I mean, that, those, those trees aren't, aren't in any way blocking your view of the buildings behind it. Are they not the same kind of trees you're talking about?
And like, like I said, I haven't been there, so I don't know. And I don't know what size they were specked at.
All right.
Yeah. Carly Kultural wasn't the landscape architect on that project, so they don't know the tree type, and I don't know, Rio, if you know, but I don't know off the top of my head what tree type it was.
I would say, based on, based on those photos, what we're specking here is larger.
Well, they appear to have a diameter of about three inches when I looked at them, but perhaps we can check that out with, with this, with the plans that were provided at Nauset. I'm real, I'm just concerned about how it's going to look, and whether we could provide for some more mature trees, so that there is more of a blocking of looking into the subdivision that may be coming here, because you're going to be looking at more than just one, one and two buildings at the two corners towards the front. You're going to be seeing the other buildings as well behind it. So that's why I had some concern about it. I realize you're, you're saying that you're not clear cutting, but you are doing a lot of cutting, and it's necessary for, for the purposes of the, of the project. But at the same time, we want to try and preserve a look here that is not something that slams you in the face.
And I would just ask you to also, because I understand what you're saying, the purpose of landscaping is to, in my opinion, disagree with me if you want, is to have a attractive streetscape, to use your words. It doesn't mean that you're trying to hide all the buildings. When you look at Fisherman's Alliance, you look at Dunkin' Donuts, you look at the motel directly to the east, none of those buildings are completely screened. Some of them are right up on the street. So I think what we're looking at, or I would respectfully submit, is what we're trying to look at is not screening the front of the property. It's landscaping the front of the property. So what Mark is proposing and, and showing you is what they're proposing as landscaping with a vibrant, both trees and understory, that will, and the shrub growth, that will be attractive. They will do some screening, absolutely all trees will block a building, but the goal isn't to block view of the site. You know, you're not putting up a fence to say you can't see in.
Perhaps I didn't use the right word, but what I'm thinking of is a balance, as you say, a balance of both landscaping and blocking that will be attractive for people coming into Chatham and going out of Chatham, other than just the residents who are in the, the subdivision themselves.
And, and I'd like to just add that, that it is also a balance that we weigh when selecting these trees, because the larger the tree is, the more likely it will fail. So we, we stick with that size because we know it works and have experience with it. So, I mean, there are larger trees available, but the larger you go, the more likely you are to not have success.
Okay. That, that brings me to another question. Ed has mentioned, in connection with the landscaping and the green areas, the question of irrigation. And I know that in Chatham, one of the big issues that we have is the question of the aquifer and landscaping, and the use of irrigation systems to support landscaping. We tend to want to have a landscaping which is native species. We like to have landscaping which does not require irrigation. And I'm wondering whether this makes any sense to be talking about irrigation in order to keep a lawn going in the center area of this project. I know that you did do that in, at Eastham, and that there is lawn in Eastham, and it can look attractive. But on the other hand, it's not a goal that we have here in Chatham with almost any of our projects. How does that square?
So currently, we have no irrigation, which is our typical Penrose standard. So what you had mentioned earlier, and Mark can certainly confirm, is we're specking native drought-resistant plantings, trees, the grass. And so what I mentioned earlier about looking into the irrigation well, that would be new irrigation, because we currently have none planned. There is some limited irrigation owned by the contractor to establish the landscaping when they're installed, and typically that's for a couple of months, a season. And that's usually done with gator bags. They'll come in with a water truck and fill the gator bags and, or set up a couple sprinklers, which I guess, setting up sprinklers from the buildings would be on town water.
And how long does that last?
Usually two months.
So you expect that you're going to satisfy, able to satisfy establishing these trees in two months?
So it, it's kind of a, it's a multi-stage process to establish the landscape. We, we typically require the contractor to maintain it for a full year, and at the one year mark, we have a walkthrough, and they're responsible for replacing, replacing anything that has not succeeded. We, the, the tree establishment is somewhat easier, because like Rio said, we use water bags that are located at every tree. They can drive in with a water truck and fill those up periodically. Usually it's a couple of times a week. But they take much longer to establish fully than, say, the lawn or the shrubs. And so the lawn may be deemed fully established within a month or two months, and that's where we would then dial back the intensive irrigation of a temporary sprinkler system. Same with the shrubs and perennials. It'd be a couple intensive months of just getting them kind of adjusted to the new site. The trees, it's really that full year, and sometimes even beyond that, but it's much less intensive. It's filling, you know, it's filling up a water bag. It's not a sprinkler that's running for hours. So, and we, we try to pick plants for these sites that we know will do well, and we've had experience doing well in, in similar situations.
So can you have a conversation with our conservation people between now and their next hearing to let us know whether they're in agreement with your proposal in terms of shrub? in terms of shrubs and trees and how they would be maintained consistent with what we're looking for here in Chatham?
Yes, we can do that. I will note that we did meet with them prior to submitting our initial application. When we had the schematic design post RFP, we met with them.
Now we're down to specific trees and types and so forth. And to that extent, it would be helpful if we knew we were complying with what we're really trying to do in the town of Chatham. A number of the other questions that I have are issues that I think can be addressed with potential conditions on the overall project. I have some reservations, as have some others, about the common area, common room and so forth. But I, at the same time, I've heard comments from people who are active in our housing community here who say those are important and it's necessary. And I understand it's a part of your philosophy that you're building a community as opposed to simply housing. And therefore, you want the common room areas. You want the ability of people to get together. You want social work available, all of those kinds of things. So I'm trying to balance those two issues, as are, I'm sure, other members on the board. But I think some of those things can be dealt with by conditions. At one point, I made the comment, I think several meetings ago, that we may be trying to stuff five pounds in a four-pound box. And I didn't, I hadn't reached a conclusion on that. I still haven't totally reached a conclusion on that. But I certainly am leaning towards erring in favor of trying to get that done, if we can get it done. It's not easy. But there's obviously a need. And we've seen that need mentioned by a number of different people here in town. I think those are the only questions I have for right now.
Okay, Lee, and then we're going to go to Dave Veach online. Unless Dave Veach, do you want to go now?
No, Lee, have Lee go ahead. I'll pick up after.
Okay, very good. Lee?
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions regarding what Attorney Singer said was the goal of this project. And is it consistent with local needs? I guess my first question is regarding the whole lease-up. Someone brought up a three-bedroom lease could potentially have six people in there. How would that lease, you know, how would that look? How would that process, what would it look like? The lease-up of, say, a three-bedroom, just use that as an example.
So I guess I can't say that this never happens. But what happens during the lease-up is people apply, put their name to be applicants. And usually, these are people of one household because they need to verify their income. And there's a lot of verification of income. And to apply as, I think also our metric is one and a half per bedroom, right?
That's our typical standard, but it can be up to two, even though that is rarely ever happens.
So we have to assess that applicant's entire household and the individuals who live in the apartment and assess everyone's income and verify, do background checks, criminal checks. And they sign a lease with us like any other rental applicant would.
Okay, so it sounds fairly controlled.
It is very controlled. There's a lot of rules related to how we lease up. The state reviews and approves affirmative fair housing marketing plan and a tenant selection plan, which lays out all the rules of how we lease up and how we do our verification, our assessment of applicants because they want to make sure there's a fair process.
Got it, okay. All right, and my other question has to do with, it's probably unlikely, but it may happen, is you all selling, Penrose selling, the development. Perhaps that could be a condition as well that, you know, if that should happen, the town needs to be notified, involved, or whatever. But I don't know how that would all work, but...
I mean, the comprehensive permit decision that you would issue would be recorded on the chain of title to the property. And all of the conditions that you may impose would run with the property forever, no matter who owns it. Just like when you grant a special permit to raise or replace a single-family house and you put a condition on it, that condition survives when that house gets sold. That would, that would be the same, from a legal point of view, title point of view, that would be the same case here. You know, where there's the land development agreement and everything else. There are other rules that may be applying there. But I don't know that you can make a comprehensive permit. I don't believe you can, although I'd ask the town council to confirm this. I don't believe you can make a comprehensive permit specific to an applicant, you know, but the, but all of those conditions would continue. Those would never go away unless someone came to you and asked to modify a decision.
Okay. I think all of my other questions have been addressed as well, so that's...
Okay, Dave Veach, you're up.
Try to get this all set up, right? Okay. Well, given the difficulty I'm having speaking, I'm not going to go too much into all of this. And I don't have a lot to add. The thing that I've got on this paper in front of me, which I usually do, and some of the questions and continuing issues and problems that some of the board members continue to have, I keep looking for this section and I can't find it in the regulations. But somewhere I saw this unless I made it up, and so maybe Jay Talman can weigh in on this. But, you know, I found in looking at the regulations after our last meeting with them that this condition, or for us to seek a pro forma with a reduced number of units, that we have to justify that by valid health, safety, environmental design, open space planning, or other local concern that directly results from the size of a project on a particular site. So that didn't really come up so much during the meeting, but we members wanted to go ahead with it, so that's fine. But beyond that, and this is the part I can't find, you know, looking through all these regulations, but somewhere, I'm pretty sure I saw a statement saying, talking about the kinds of evidence that the state would look at in, were there to be an appeal of a condition like reducing density. And this may be my imagination, maybe Jay Talman can answer this for me. I'm pretty sure I saw the wording, wording basically that indicates that the kinds of evidence that we could introduce is, would be testimony of some of the experts, the professionals, the engineers, our peer review engineers, town staff, basically professional opinions. Not so much what we might individually think of as, well, this is tied to the environment or it's tied to this or that. There's, it seems to me, there's a very specific process that's been laid out. And it's very narrow. And it seems to me that Attorney Talman has pointed out to us that our chances of success as a town in trying to achieve this might be fairly narrow. So that I just want to point out here. I'm not here, I'm hearing lots of concerns about this and that and little things and none of this. But when I look at that, what we're supposed to be balancing this on the other side with the need for the housing, which is, which is in clear evidence and clearly demonstrated. I'm not sure what we're doing here. I really don't. And so I think that's about all I have to say at this point. I'd be curious to see, hear what Jay's answer to that might be.
Yep, okay. Council, are you able to connect to us and respond to that before we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can hear me here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let me, I wanted to also address the question on transfer. So first of all, before I get to Mr. Veach's questions, the comprehensive permit is specific to a specific applicant. We can require, as a condition of approval, that before they transfer to a non-related entity, of selling it just to another developer that's not related to them, that they come and see us and get our sign-off. What we can't do is make that onerous and deny it for no good cause. We would have to have substantially good cause. But we can track and require that they come back to the board and ask us for our stamp of approval. Cannot be unreasonably denied in the event of a transfer. So I just wanted to put that on the record for the benefit of the board. Okay, on Mr. Veach's question, there's a lot of what I would call conflicting regulations and conflicting understandings. First of all, on the threshold matter of asking for a pro forma and asking for peer review of that pro forma, my view of that is that it's a fairly low bar. And whether I agree or disagree, or Mr. Veach agrees or disagrees with what Virginia said, I think Virginia has laid out just cause to at least cross this threshold. That does not mean that that would be a basis on which, that I could sustain a reduction of density if it came to that. It just means that to engage in the process, I think that she has outlined thoughtfully enough to utilize what's in those regulations to engage in this process if the board wants to. And what I'm hearing is, I haven't quite heard that yet. So that's the first part of it. Let's say, for example, that the board did choose, after all of the analysis, to reduce density, whether the numbers say one thing or the other. And let's say that Penrose appealed that to the Housing Appeals Committee. This is where the regulation that Mr. Singer has talked about and that Ms. Fenwick referenced is different than what you would have to do once you get to the Housing Appeals Committee. Once you get to the Housing Appeals Committee on a reduction of density or a removal of the community building, or both, either or or both, would be, it would be the burden of the applicant, without regard at all to the merits of whether or not that was a good idea or a bad idea to reduce the density or get rid of the community building. They would have to demonstrate that it would make the project uneconomic. Now, with respect to the reduction in density, which we see a lot of, and I've done a lot of cases, the standards there are not like typical standards of money in, money out. It's a lot more complicated than that. And the requirements and the evidence would be in accordance with the state's guidelines for determining reasonable return on investment. I can tell you now, as I've told you previously, that that is not particularly a board-friendly calculus. Boards do not do particularly well in that review. That's not to say that it's, a board has never demonstrated that something is, or that an applicant has failed in that test. But normally, an applicant comes out of that with a conclusion that indeed a reduction in density, and I want to talk just about the density of units, I think it's a different question altogether with removal of the community building. If the applicant demonstrates that it will make the project uneconomic, then the burden shifts back to the board to demonstrate that there is an adequate public health, safety, local concern, public welfare thing that overcomes the presumptive benefits of affordable housing. That is a really difficult burden, again, for a board to meet. And it is rare, very rare, over the 56 years of this statute, where boards have met that. That's not to say that they haven't. And that's not to say that the rationales that Ms. Fenwick has brought to bear might not survive scrutiny there. But anyone that reads the cases would clearly conclude that it is a difficult burden of proof there to demonstrate because the weight of the benefit of affordable housing is very significant in the eyes of the Housing Appeals Committee. So that's like all of the steps in that. And then, you know, I could break that down a little bit further if people wanted me to. But that's the kind of analysis that I think would factor into your next steps here.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Nixon?
Thank you. Folks, in the past, I've mentioned about the crosswalk, and I know where that stands now. You're going to apply to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if you get the green light, get the green light. But unfortunately, that doesn't help with what the final decision would be, meaning, let's say, no. And as Stephen Buckley pointed out, I think maybe it was back in April and perhaps June, since you'd lived there for, I don't know how many years, where the kids play is across the street. There's a green area, if you happen to be right there at this Main Street. If you look right across the street, there's a big green area. And that's where the kids go to play. And that rang a bell with me because the neighborhood I was brought up in, there was one big green area. And all the kids played there. I mean, we played all the games you can think of and some we shouldn't have. It's okay. And I'm still afraid of what's going to happen because to me, the welfare of just one child, just one child, would override the value of the housing. So that being true, you've laid out a play area on the green. Well, that's great if you're four or five years old. But the older kids, they're going to say, poof, and they're going to go across the street. And what happens is, as you know, the Rotary or the Roundabout, whatever you want to call it, that you go around in front of Larry's and all that, and you're heading east. You come through that, and you put your foot in the gas. I mean, just go out there for five or 10 minutes, that's what I did, and I watched it. Boom, you put your foot on the gas. So you're coming down, and you have, let's say, three or four kids that have banded together, and they want to go across the street and play in that green area. And what happens? The two older ones say, well, let's go. And they go, and we dare you to come. And then maybe the third one and the fourth one, God love them. I love, that's where my concern is. So going back to our discussion here, density relates to the number of children we are going to have there. Is that not correct?
Yes, we will have presumably one child at least.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay. So to me, since there's no other place on this three acres that would appeal to the seven, eight, nine-year-old, the 10-year-old, whatnot, running across the street, daring one another to do it, brings to me a definite density problem. And it means to me, to protect those kids, the density has to be lowered. those kids, that density has to be lowered.
Did you want to say anything, or do you?
No, thank you.
All right, so, true story, it doesn't affect my ability or willingness to approve this with conditions, but when I was five, and I lived in Medford, I was supposed to wait and cross the street when my mother came out. I did not wait, and I did get hit by a car, true, true story. There was no crosswalk, and the woods were across the street, so I just can't help but say that, kids do that, and if there had been some kind of a situation there for safety, maybe that wouldn't have happened to me, I don't know, but I'm, again, it doesn't mean that I don't see everything else about this, but it is a fact that kids cross streets when they're not supposed to, and the more safety measures you can have, the better, at least you can say you tried. So, we're trying to say we tried, we're looking at safety, we're looking at, I mean, I agree with everything that my colleagues have brought up, I don't really have anything new, I'll start with, the pro forma was absolutely timely, it was legal. I, I never liked the idea of a community center, front and center like that, it doesn't, I don't know how you could ever argue that that furthers your ability to make this financially feasible, because there's no units in that. So I agreed with my colleague at Acton from the beginning about that, and I stand by that. I just think people can use the community center, it's not that crowded there, I go there a lot, I go there all different times of days with my two granddaughters, just to even let them run around, and there's not a lot of people in there, and that's a great place to chat with, you know, you never know who you're going to run into, it's just more friendly as a community to use that, it's right down the street. So, I'm not a fan of that community center, I never was, and so that is not, nothing new. I'm also not a fan of all these trees coming down, and I think that you do have to come back to us and talk about a well, because my understanding, after conversations with experts, is that the town of Chatham will not let you water, use the water for irrigation, you're going to have to dig a well, or find a spigot, or something, and the idea of that you have the people come back if the tree failed after a year and just plant a new one, that rings a bell of the, you know, the issue of, the definition of insanity, what makes you think it's going to, if you put another one there, that's going to survive? So that isn't enough for me to know that you're going to replace it with another one, you know? I think you really have to have a very direct and great process for your irrigation so that we're not looking at a train wreck there. So, let's see, what else? I don't know if I have to say that much more now, but I do want to get an expert, I want to make sure that our, our board is on board with this. I, I can't read that pro forma, that's why I'm a lawyer and I'm not a doctor, and you hear that all the time, but true story, I, I can't look at those numbers, it's not fair for the community to expect, you know, us to look at that and just take your word for it, no, no offense, but we need to get the, we need to continue to do our due diligence, that's all we've ever been doing here, we, you know, we don't, we don't get paid for this, and we're just doing this because we care about what goes right there in the HBDC in the, you know, leading towards downtown Chatham, and we're doing our due diligence, we have time, and we want to get, I want to get an expert to look at that pro forma and let us know what they think. So I wanted to just make sure our board, I don't make all the, I don't make the rules, I'm just saying that I would like to do that. David, would you like to do that?
I certainly would, I agree with you 100% that it is part of our job here to do that, because as you point out, Ms. Fenwick has a lot of financial background and ability, but I'm sure she would like, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but even if she could read it perfectly, she needs a little bit of confirmation, in my case, I need a lot of confirmation.
Is there anyone on the board, and, and please feel free to say you don't want it, you don't think we need it, and is there anybody that doesn't want us to, to look at that pro forma with professional eyes?
Yes, that would, that would be me.
Okay, noted.
I keep losing my, I've been losing my voice figuratively for a long time on this board, and now I'm losing it physically, but no, I don't think this is necessary, I don't see the point, honestly.
Okay, okay, noted.
This is not how, in, in, when I was in business, this is not how I was raised to treat people that I was doing business with, and that's what I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Veach, respected and noted, Paul?
Let me indicate that it seems to me pretty clear that, from Penrose's viewpoint, they don't feel that they can go forward with this with a reduced 42-unit project, and it seems to me that their analysis, even if we have an expert come in and say we disagree with them, we think they could do it, they aren't going to do it, and that does not make sense to me, given the possibility that we can condition this project such that we can arrive at a result which, as they say, may not be perfect, but will work, and I do not see the need for an expert, independent expert, to look at the pro forma and determine that they think Penrose is wrong, let's say, and as a result of that, Penrose walks, and we end up with nothing. That doesn't make any sense to me.
So, I'm going to ask Attorney Talman, how do we go about, is it a vote, or how do we go about deciding? I guess I could ask Ginny quickly first, and, and the other members, you, you haven't said you don't want it, you want the information, do you want the information?
Yeah, I think.
You put your mic on?
It's been provided, let's, let's make sure.
It's, it's been provided, it's been requested, it's been provided, why wouldn't we try and interpret it and understand it?
Okay, so that's three, and maybe even the associate members, they haven't said that they don't want it, so council, can you help us out here, have we met our burden?
So, I, I think you've met your burden, in, in my view, but I, I guess I want to, would want to have a little bit of clarity, and, and maybe, and I don't want to put Virginia on the spot, when I heard Virginia's comments, it almost appeared, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that it was, you wanted the site to be more open, that, and that it almost seemed like it was an either or, either remove the community building or remove six units. I don't, but I, I would, would like to have some clarity on that, just so I could help give good advice, I'm not sure it's ultimately determinative if three members have chosen to seek a professional review of the pro forma.
Okay, if, so, the removal of the management building does not impact the density, that, I agree with someone that said that earlier, so the, the comment that I had made many, many months ago about the density and removing one of the unit, one of the buildings and going from 48 to 42, was to help reduce the density of this three-acre parcel, so, so that's separate. The, the management building I have, was not as vocal about early on, because I didn't need to be, there were other, other members that were bringing it up, but I never liked having all that streetscape with buildings on, on the street, such an important street. So, when the, as the meetings progressed, I, I wanted to also, as, as we're accumulating our feedback, I think it would make the project look better to not have that building there and have that whole area be open space. So, so, so no, they're not, they're not the same, and they're not connected, but I, I just, I think to clarify for you, Jay, the, I think the most important thing is the density.
And if it helps, Jay, I agree with everything that Virginia just said, I, I concur entirely.
And that's fair, that's why I wanted the clarification, because I, I think that if the board's view was, we could live with the other six units, or that there's not enough bang for your buck by reducing by just six units in terms of the public health, safety, welfare issues, and you just, you felt you could accomplish your goals with the removal of the community building, I, I'm not sure you would need a pro forma review to do that, because I don't think their pro forma addresses just that issue, nor do I think it would be particularly easy to address that on a pro forma, on a project programmatic level, maybe, but that's not dollars and cents. So I think it's good to get that clarification. The board is entitled under the regulation to get some review of their pro forma, there are a handful of folks out there that know the standards under 40B, which are different than most development standards for review of pro formas, and I could probably get one of them to take a review of the pro forma that they have provided by, and I think your next hearing would be the 30th, is that right?
That's correct, yes, we would.
And where does that stand with vis a vis the 180 days since you opened the hearing?
Sarah's going to answer that.
180 days is November 4th, so that would be the last Thursday that we could meet before the deadline.
Okay, all right, so I think we, I think that we could probably get it done by then, I think it would be somewhat cursory in nature, and we'd have to give them some facts, but I think the pro forma that Penrose has provided is, is fairly cursory in nature too, I mean, it's not a pejorative, it's just a straightforward review of the dollars and cents of this. So, I think I can get that reviewed, I already talked to one person today, and I'm waiting to hear back, and I, there's another person that, that I wanted to tee up, just in case the board took this vote, that I want to talk to as maybe being a good fit for this, and then I can work with Randy and with Sarah to identify and get that person, you know, get a scope of review and get it funded and do all that other good stuff.
That, thank you, thank you. Andrew?
I think in our response to kind of the conversation today, Mr. Semple's comment about what Penrose is willing to do, regardless of the results of this peer review, I understand the board wants to better understand it, but what I started with saying at the beginning of this hearing was, these numbers are reflective of how we operate our properties, and I think that's why the town chose us, and a peer reviewer can review it and provide you more context, but for us, the 48 unit is the plan that we are willing to do, and 42 is not something we're willing to move forward with.
Are you still willing to come back on October 30th?
Yeah, certainly.
Can you make a motion to do that?
Nope.
A request, a request? No, you can't make a motion, I apologize, a request, and then Paul will make the motion.
Okay. All right, then, request to me, request a continuance to the next meeting.
Very good, October 30th?
It's our, our decision.
Yeah, okay, Paul?
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to October 30, 2025.
I second that.
Okay.
Point of order, could I ask just one question?
Sure, sure.
Accepting everything we've just talked about, knowing that we're really continuing for the purposes of discussing the peer review, and you have to close on the 30th, because...
Right, we absolutely do.
Question, would, so that we could streamline the meeting on October 30th and hopefully get to deliberations, depending what happens, would you be willing to close the hearing at this point to new public testimony, and the only thing coming in is the peer review, and then during deliberations, you're entitled to talk with us?
I'm sorry, but we're not going to do that. Okay?
I agree.
So, um, yes, no, I know, so you seconded the?
I did second.
Motion for October 30th, and the five of us vote on that, I think, right? Okay, so, and you?
I'll vote yes.
Okay.
All vote yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Dave Veach, are you still with us, you still talking?
Yes, Dave Veach votes yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well, that's unanimous, we'll see you on October 30th.
Thank you.
Spooky times.
I need to move to adjourn.
I'll move, I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
Second, I vote yes.
Dave Veach seconded.
Yes, I heard Mr. Veach second and vote yes.
Very good.
All vote yes.
Ed, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 And I vote yes, good evening, Chatham, thank you, everybody.